Everyone, if you would, please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, good evening, everyone. As Superintendent of Schools, it is my duty and honor to preside over the special meeting for Board Reorganization as Secretary of the Board, as stipulated in Florida statutes. First, we will have the oath ceremony, which will include our newly-elected District 2 School Board member Alexandria Ayala and re-elected School Board members Barbara McQuinn in District 1 and Frank Barbieri in District 5. Following the oath ceremony, they will each have an opportunity to make comments. We will then move to the organizational portion of the meeting, which will include the selection of the School Board Chair and Vice Chair. Once the voting is complete, I will turn the meeting over to the Board Chair, who will then preside over the remaining of the meeting. We are happy to have two judges here today for the swearing-in ceremony. The Honorable Kathleen Crowell from the Juvenile Division of the 15th Judicial Circuit will swear in Ms. McQuinn and Mr. Barbieri, and the Honorable Ashley Zuckerman from the Trial Division of the 15th Judicial Circuit will swear in Ms. Ayala. A huge welcome and thank you to you both. Will our three Board Members please proceed to the front of the dais, where you will join Judges Crowell and Zuckerman? When you are ready, you may proceed.
We're going to do one at a time, so who wants to go first? All right. You'll raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of Palm Beach County School Board Member.
The duties of Palm Beach County School Board Member.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
That I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of Palm Beach County School Board Member.
The duties of Palm Beach County School Board Member.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I'm now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution.
That I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And government of the United States and of the State of Florida.
And government of the United States and of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
Of Palm Beach County School Board Member.
Of Palm Beach County School Board Member.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
If you wouldn't mind, please join me in giving our thanks again to Judge Kathleen Crowell and Judge Ashley Zuckerman for joining us today. I will now invite each of the newly sworn-in Board Members to make their individual comments. We will start with District 1 School Board Member Barbara McQuinn.
Thank you so much, Judge Crowell. That was, still gives you the chills. This has been a difficult year for everyone, in Palm Beach County, our nation, the world. Those who know me well know that I love a challenge, and probably because of that, I feel so very privileged to continue to serve as a member of this school board, and I'm very excited about the work that we have to do. Thank you.
At this time, we'll have Ms. Alexandria Ayala speak.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would first like to congratulate my colleagues, Board Member Frank Barbieri and Board Member Barbara McQuinn, on your reelection. Thank you to the entire Board for your leadership and to Dr. Fanoi as well as the district staff. I am truly humbled and excited to be a member of this body and to be serving with each of you as the next Board Member to have the honor of representing District 2. I would like to also extend my sincerest gratitude and best wishes to Board Member Chuck Shaw for his decades of leadership, commitment to education, and his tireless advocacy for our students in our schools. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Today is a very special day for me, for my family, and for our community. Palm Beach County is a special place to call home, and our schools are the bedrock of that special community. I am the proud product of the very schools this Board works diligently to represent. Being a Palm Beach County Public School graduate is a badge of honor that I wear proudly, and it's an experience that has defined my career and a perspective I hope to bring to this Board as we look towards the future. Today, I am grateful to join the rest of my colleagues in the mission of providing a quality, equitable, and safe education for our students while supporting the teachers and staff who keep our schools running. Over the last few years, I have spoken to many families and students. I have heard from our teachers, faculty, and district staff. I have heard from our taxpayers and business owners. And while COVID-19 has presented its own often new set of challenges on top of the day-to-day demands of running a school district, it's true that our schools here in Palm Beach County are not immune to the hardships facing our community. I view the challenges currently facing our schools as opportunities to improve, to innovate, and to ensure that we're providing the best possible education for our students, our leaders of not only tomorrow but of today, right now. I am committed to working collaboratively with each of my colleagues on this dais and the community at large to address the student achievement gap in our schools, to support our teachers and district staff now more than ever, to preserve and protect our fine arts and career and choice programs, to protect our precious tax dollars and manage our budget appropriately, and to ensure transparency and accountability in district decision-making. I'm here to learn, to listen, and to work diligently to make a difference. Together, I know we will continue building on the tremendous promise of success that is the Palm Beach County School District. I am just, you know, so full of gratitude today, brimming with it, and while I could say a million thank yous up here, I want to recognize some special individuals. To Judge Zuckerman for taking time out to be here today and celebrating this such wonderful and important day with me. Thank you. I've always admired you, and today's no different. The biggest thank you is, of course, reserved for my mom, Kelly, who is sitting here with us today, for her love, her faith that she instilled in me at an early age, and her support throughout this entire journey. I am here today because of her sacrifices, her strength, and her love. Thank you, Mommy. It means the world to have my Uncle Nelson and my Aunt Iris here with me today, sharing in this moment that none of us could have ever imagined, but that our entire family has all worked so hard for. Thank you to my partner, Rob, for being my rock, really a source of constant encouragement, fortitude, and light through everything. Thank you to our Classroom Teachers Association for putting their trust in me during this process. I see President Justin Katz sitting here with us today. I will continue to be an advocate for those who are on the front lines of our classrooms day in and day out, and know that you can count on me. And to the teachers who reached out to me individually to congratulate me on today, thank you so much. Thank you to our service employees and our district staff for all you do to keep our schools operating and top-rated. I greatly appreciate your support, and just know I have your back. Thank you to the business community, the community organizations, and elected leaders for your constant support and counsel. Gracias a mis amigos en el Hispanic Education Coalition por su apoyo, su amistad, y por su diligencia en la meta de mejorar las oportunidades ofrecidas para nuestra comunidad hispana y latina en el condado Palm Beach. Gracias, Joaquin. And a very special thank you to the voters of District 2, without whom today would not have been possible. They put their trust and faith in me and our shared vision for our schools. I do not take this responsibility lightly, and you have my commitment to always give you my 200%. Last but certainly not least, I want to take a moment to briefly address the history we have all made together. I am incredibly honored and proud to say I am the very first Latina elected to the Palm Beach County School Board. This victory is shared with every single member of our community, and I couldn't be more humbled and excited that we have achieved this milestone together here in Palm Beach County. Today, the work only begins. I understand the depth and weight of the position that we all hold and the trust placed in this body to see our schools in the right direction, never forgetting that what's best for our children need to always be at the forefront of every single decision that we make. I am here to serve you and to be your voice. My door will always be open, and I recognize that the best days are still ahead of us, but only if we work together. I am committed to the work of this cause, and I am ready to get to work for District 2 and for Palm Beach County. Thank you so much.
And at this time, representing District 5, Mr. Frank Barbieri.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. First of all, thank you, Judge Crowell, for taking the time to come here today. Very much appreciate it. I know you have a very busy schedule, so thank you for making the time for us. I want to thank my wife, Rita. You know, there's days, especially over the last seven months, you know, she's supported me. I've been on the Board now for 12 years. This will be the 12th year, and there are days when I don't see her. I'm gone in the morning. I come up here, and sometimes I don't get home until after she's already in bed, or I spend the evenings answering hundreds of emails and reading emails and phone calls, and she puts up with all of that. So I want to thank her for her constant support, helping me get through all of the duties that I have as a School Board Member. I also want to thank the voters in District 5 for re-electing me again. This will be the third time. I appreciate the trust they put in me, and I hopefully will show them that their trust is well-placed over the next four years. You know, when I first got on the School Board back in 2008, everybody thought that I would spend four years on the School Board and then go to, as they put it, something bigger and better. I don't think there's anything bigger and better than being on a School Board, where you can change the lives of children. I mean, what can be bigger and better than changing the future, making something, making a difference for the life of a child that otherwise would be doomed to failure if not giving them a great education and making sure that they have all the tools they need to be successful adults? So, in my opinion, there is nothing bigger and better than this. I had never had any intention of using this as a stepping stone to go anywhere else, because the only thing you could do is step down from being on the Palm Beach County School Board. So I want to thank again, thank all of you for your support, especially the administration. I know sometimes I'm a little difficult to get along with. Sometimes my passion gets a little heated. My wife told me I should probably sit on my hands when that starts, because it probably would calm me down. That Italian temper sometimes comes through. So for those of you that I might have offended over the years, I've tried to apologize when I do that, and hopefully you'll forgive me, knowing that I'm just passionate about what I do here on the School Board. And again, I thank all of you for your support. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
If you don't mind, would everyone please join me in recognizing our new School Board team? Mrs. Bass, will you please call the roll?
District 1, Barbara McQuinn.
Here.
District 2, Alexandria Ayala.
Here.
District 3, Karen Brill.
Here.
District 4, Erica Whitfield.
Here.
District 5, Frank Barbieri.
Here.
District 6, Marsha Andrews.
Here.
District 7, Deborah Robinson.
Here.
We will now move to the organizational portion of this meeting by calling for nominations for School Board Chair and Vice Chair. The floor is now open for nominations for School Board Chair. I see Ms. Brill.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Mr. Barbieri to continue as our Board Chair.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, as there is only one person nominated in this race, instead of doing a roll-call vote, I will call the question. All those in favor of nominating Frank Barbieri as your Board Chair? Opposed? Seeing none, the vote is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Barbieri. The floor is now open for nominations for School Board Vice Chair. I'm going to see Ms. Andrews.
Dr. Deborah Robinson.
Dr. Deborah Robinson.
Yeah.
Any other nominations?
Ms. Karen Brill.
Ms. Karen Brill. Any other nominations? Seeing none, the School Board Vice Chair are now closed. Nominations for the School Board Vice Chair are now closed. The nominations are Dr. Deborah Robinson and Mrs. Karen Brill. Each School Board Member will cast one vote for their choice of School Board Vice Chair. The clerk will now conduct the roll-call vote, and following will tally the votes.
District 1, Barbara McQuinn, how do you vote?
Karen Brill.
District 2, Alexandria Ayala, how do you vote?
Karen Brill.
District 3, Karen Brill, how do you vote?
Karen Brill.
District 4, Erica Whitfield, how do you vote?
Karen Brill.
District 5, Frank Barbieri, how do you vote?
At this point, I'll vote for Karen Brill, since she already has four of the votes, and I nominated her.
District 6, Marsha Andrews, how do you vote?
Dr. Deborah Robinson.
District 7, Deborah Robinson, how do you vote?
I'll vote for myself and move to make it unanimous. It's unanimous.
Yes, the winner for the Board Vice Chair, Karen Brill.
I am pleased to announce that Karen Brill will be the Board Vice Chairman for the upcoming At this time, I turn over the remaining of the meeting over to our Chairman, Mr. Frank Barbieri.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Board Members, I recommend the Board approve the proposed list of dates for the 2021 regular Board Meeting. Motion? Motion by Mrs. Andrews, seconded by Ms. Ayala. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Board Members, I didn't take the opportunity. Thank you all for your trust that you put in me as the Board Chair. I appreciate that. Next item, I recommend the Board authorize the Board Chair and Superintendent to complete and execute the documents required by Florida Statute 1001.371 relating to this reorganization meeting, including a copy of the unadopted minutes of this meeting, and to forward and file them with the Florida Department of Education. Motion by Ms. Brill, seconded by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Board Member, I recommend the Board review and approve the list of School Board Committee assignments for 2021, and I also will take two motions. The first one is that one. I recommend the Board review and approve the list of School Board Committee assignments for 2021. You all have a copy of those. So the Board Clerk has suggested that we go down the list, and if there are changes, we vote on those changes. So let's go down the list together. The first item, the first one is American Association of Caregiving Youth. Ms. McQuinn had that, and Mrs. Andrews was the alternate. Are there any changes? Ms. McQuinn?
Yes, simply because I'm picking up some other duties, and I am at opposite ends of the county. I do have to say, though, that in resigning from that Board of AACY, what an incredible, incredible group of Board Members and what they do for our children who serve family members or people who live in their homes who are unable to care for themselves. It's a great, great group, so I'm hoping that someone else will step up and take that seat.
Ms. Brill?
Thank you, and since I was actually a caregiving youth and actually raised my brothers when they were young, I'm going to step up if nobody else wants it.
All right, if nobody else wants it, Ms. Brill will be down. Mrs. Andrews, you were the backup. Do you wish to stay as a backup on that?
I'd like to give that up to someone new that might want to learn about that.
Dr. Robinson?
So if the criteria is having been a caregiving youth, then I qualify, so I'll be the backup.
Okay, Dr. Robinson is the backup on that. We'll vote on the list after we're all done with all of them. Is that okay with the Board Clerk? Okay. Audit Committee, I'm down there. I've served on that for 12 years. I'd like to stay unless anybody has any objection. Mrs. Whitfield is the backup. Want to stay as a backup, Mrs. Whitfield? Center for Creative Education Board of Directors, Ms. McQuinn is the assigned Board Member for that?
No. Wow, that was very loud. Sorry. I served on it most recently, but that has been canceled since last year when they wanted to go down the route of having a charter school. You remember that was that email I sent to you guys? So the whole thing just needs to be taken off, because none of us can serve on that capacity right now.
Okay, so that committee has removed Board Clerk from the list. Children's Services Council, Dr. Robinson, you've been on that. You wish to stay.
I'd like to stay, yes.
There's no alternates allowed on that, so it'll stay that way. Communities and Schools, Mrs. Andrews, you were...
Yeah.
Okay, do we need a backup on that, Mrs. Andrews?
No.
Community Alliance, Ms. Brill, you were listed on that.
I'm having to stay with that, but the time is not right, so we'll get an update. We had switched for a little while, and it's switched back now to morning, so we'll get clear guidance.
All right, I know, Ms. Ayala, obviously you're not on any of these, so speak up if you find something there you would like to discuss with the other Board Member that might be already on the Construction Oversight Review Committee. I've served on that one for 12 years. Also, I'd like to stay unless anybody has any objection. And the backup on that is Dr. Robinson? Okay, Dr. Robinson? Council of Great City Schools, Mrs. Andrews? Dr. Robinson's the backup? Criminal Justice Commission, Mrs. Andrews? Cultural Council Board of Directors, Ms. McQuinn? Stay? Want to back up?
No, it's an ex officio position anyway, and frankly, most of their meetings conflict with our meetings, so let's just keep it just like it is.
Okay. The Institute for Cultural Advancement?
Same.
You need a backup on that one? Or is that an ex officio position also? Ms. McQuinn?
I'm sorry.
Could you use a backup on that one?
Okay, I know I'm way down here. You're asking me what?
If you need a backup on the Institute for Cultural Advancement?
No.
Okay. Early Learning Coalition of Palm Beach County?
I'd like to stay if I can.
Mrs. Andrews, you're the backup?
I could continue to be a backup, but if someone would like to have it, you know...
I would be interested in serving.
Ms. Ayala, you'd like to be the backup on that?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews. Ms. Ayala?
Ms. Barbieri?
Sorry, yes, ma'am.
If we can, I'm sorry to go out of order, but if we can just back up a bit, because I looked through to see where Mr. Shaw has been serving, and there really isn't anything much here for our newest School Board Member, would you be interested in serving on the Community Alliance? You want to go back and see the dates? Because I just don't see any openings, other than...
Are you suggesting that you'll pull off of that, Ms. Ayala?
I would pull off if she would like to do it.
Would you like to be on the Community Alliance, Mrs. Ayala? I think the next one was Criminal Justice Commission. Did I already do that one?
It said Foundation.
I'm sorry?
We're on Education Foundation.
Education Foundation.
I'll stay on that. Wait, I would love to make a plea to get it one year, Ms. Brill. I would really like to do it one year. I've been kind of waiting patiently for five years.
Well, I'd like to stay on it for now, only because, as you all know, I work, and it fits in with my schedule. If I'm giving up the Community Alliance, it's just easier for me, because my schedule's a little bit more limited.
Okay, all right, well, think about me for one year at least. I would really like to do it. I'm just, I'm hoping one day I can get it.
Amis first at Palm Beach County. Ms. McQuinn?
I'd like to remain on that Board.
Is there room for a backup in case you can't make it, or are you the only one left still to be?
No backup.
Okay. The Federal Relations Network? Mrs. Andrews? Backup is Ms. Brill? Ms. Brill? Are you saying yes? Okay. It's hard to see you through three panes of plastic here, so I got you. Finance Committee, Ms. McQuinn?
Yes, I'd love to stay on that. And may I take this moment to also, I don't think we've had so much on our agendas before, that I have been invited to represent our Board on the Florida Palm Board, and I'll bring a report back to you soon. I'm very comfortable not taking over for Mr. Shaw, certainly, because he's been there for about 10 years, but LeAnn Evans will be guiding me through that. So I just want to throw in there that I will be, I actually have joined that, and Dr. Fanoi has already welcomed me to the group, so thank you.
Florida School Labor Relations Services, FSBA Florida School Labor Relations Services Board of Directors? Mr. Shaw had that one.
Go ahead.
I would be interested in serving on the FSBA Labor Relations.
Well, I wasn't sure, since Mr. Shaw was that and the FSBA Board of Directors, that is a role I would very much like to take on, so I don't know if they are... I noticed the Legislative Committee is different, so knowing that, I'm totally fine.
Well, I just want to make sure that you know that I've been Mr. Shaw's backup, and it's now time for me to step up on the Board of Directors. I've been the backup for him for years, so I really am ready to step into this role. I've been to all the meetings, and I'm not interested in not being able to participate at that level.
So as we're fighting over Mr. Shaw's position, I'm totally fine with that. I'm just ready to move forward with some things. So I noticed that Ms. Andrews is on the Legislative Committee, and I don't know if we can bargain with that or going back to. I would love locally to do, I don't know if it was the Criminal Justice Commission or one of those.
Okay, I have one to give to you, Mrs. McQuinn, and I'm happy that you ought to do one. It's no longer called the Legislative Committee, and Ms. Brill has been working with me on that with the Florida School Boards for a long time. It's called the Advocacy Committee. I've been working diligently this year with them, but I'm certainly willing to give that one up to you so that you can get involved and learn and move forward.
So notice how well we have worked that out to be win-win, and that's great, because then Ms. Andrews will be coaching me on what I need to do for that piece, too. Are we good?
Thank you.
Okay, so just let me make sure I understand for the Board Clerk. So Florida School Labor Relations Services Board of Directors? Which one of you decided you're taking that?
That is, I want to say it right, Ayala?
Ms. Ayala.
Ayala has that one.
She has that, and then Ms. Andrews is FSAB, the FSBA Board of Directors. May I be the alternate?
Okay. And then the Advocacy Committee, FSBA Advocacy Committee, that's Ms. McQuinn?
Yes.
And the backup is, currently Ms. Brill was the backup behind Mrs. Andrews. Ms. Brill, you want to keep that? GLADES Career Readiness Roundtable, I don't think there's anybody but you, Mrs. Andrews.
I'm the superstar.
Mrs. Whitfield, you're the backup on that?
Yes, I'm happy to be.
Yes, stay.
Well, no, if Ms. Whitfield wanted, I don't mean a break by any stretch of the imagination. It's just that if she's picking up other things, I'm also very willing to serve as an alternate on that.
I'm sorry, Mrs. McQuinn, I couldn't understand what you said.
If you want, you can be the alternate, that's fine.
Yes, thank you. Just for a minute.
Ms. Whitfield just said that she is okay with my taking that alternate position for the GLADES Career Readiness Roundtable?
Let's be clear, I've never gone, because Ms. Andrews is so dedicated. She does a great job.
Thank you.
But Barbara, I'll give you a chance to go. I really will.
I'm excited for it. Thank you.
Now we have the Hispanic Education Coalition of Palm Beach County, and I wonder who should probably take out?
I definitely will. I definitely will give that one up to our new board member.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Ayala's got that, and the backup was Dr. Robinson? Want to stay there? Historical Society of Palm Beach County Board of Governors, Dr. Robinson and Ms. Whitfield?
I'm happy to give that up.
You're happy to give it up?
Happy to give it up.
I would be interested.
Ms. Ayala's interested. Anybody else? So, we need a backup?
We need an alternate.
I'm sorry?
I can stay the backup.
Stay the backup, Ms. Whitfield? Homeless Advisory Board?
I'm happy to stay there.
Ms. Whitfield was the one, she wants to stay. Ms. McQuinn, you're the backup on that? Yes? Intergovernmental Coordination Program? Mr. Shaw was primary, Ms. Whitfield was secondary?
I've never been, but I'm happy to go.
I don't know.
They do still meet. Anna Yaski coordinates, and I'm familiar, so I'd be happy to step in.
Okay.
So, and so that leaves Ms. Whitfield. Do you want to still be the backup on that?
Sure.
Independent Referendum Oversight Committee is Ms. Brill, and then Mrs. Andrews is the backup?
Yes, Ms. Brill, I'd love to come to a meeting when you're not there, so let me know.
Surely, everybody's still welcome. Right now, we're doing it virtually, but you know, as long as they know in advance, board members can participate, just like with Audit Committee.
Okay. So, it'll stay that same, then Brill and Andrews, okay? Independent Sales Certax Oversight Committee, Ms. Brill and Ms. Andrews are also the first and second on that?
If Mrs. Ayala would like that, I would be willing to give her an opportunity for one of these.
This is for IROC?
ISOC.
ISOC? Sure, I'll step in.
Okay. Juvenile Justice Commission, Mrs. Andrews is the primary, Mrs. Whitfield is the backup?
It's so great to go there. I love it. I've been there for a while, but you learn so much, but I will give it up if somebody just has to take it away from me. I'll be dragging, but I'll take it up.
What do you think, Judge Kroll? Should we let Mrs. Andrews be... And Mrs. Whitfield is the backup?
Happy to be.
Okay. Pine Jog Board of Directors, Mr. Shaw had that?
I'm interested in that one.
Ms. Ayala would like that? I don't know if there should be a backup on that or not?
Doesn't say.
Pardon me?
Doesn't say we need a backup.
School Health Advisory Council, Ms. Brill and Ms. Whitfield had those? Dr. Robinson?
I'd be interested in serving on Shack if Ms. Brill is willing to give it up.
I can't hear you.
I said I would be willing to serve on Shack if you're willing to give it up.
I like serving there, but I'm willing to share. Just let me know when you can't go, and I'll go as your backup, but yes, you can have it.
So, Dr. Robinson wants that, and Ms. Brill, you'll be the backup. Mrs. Whitfield was the original backup. Are you okay with it?
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm good.
Okay. Technology Advisory Committee, Mrs. McQuinn? Take Stock in Children, Mrs. Andrews and Ms. Whitfield?
Yes, I'm a mentor. I love it. I've been on it a long time, but if someone just truly wants to learn, it's a great organization. I'd like to stay. If I don't see anybody, I'll keep it.
You'd like to keep it?
I'll keep it, absolutely.
Ms. Whitfield, you were the backup?
Yeah, I'm fine. I can stay a backup, or somebody else can have it.
I would like it.
Treasure Coast Work Group, Mrs. McQuinn? That's up at your end of the...
Yes, and I believe that Mr. Crawford is not going to do that anymore, but we can wait and check. So, yes, keep me on that.
Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, Ms. Whitfield, you were appointed by the governor to that seat?
Yeah, a few years ago, but I haven't, it hasn't, I haven't been on it in a couple of years now. I feel like we should take it off and just, if I ever get through the appointment process again, it's pretty difficult to do, so. I haven't been on since there was Governor Scott, so unfortunately, it's been a while. So, I think we should just take it off completely.
Which one is it?
The Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council.
Should we check with the governor's office and see if he wants to appoint somebody from the school board?
They really wanted somebody from Palm Beach for a long time.
So, if he's willing to point you, would you be wanting to stay?
Oh, yeah, I would, but it's like every year, it's just very low on their priority list to put that...
Superintendent, could you have Mr. Tierney check with the governor's office and see if they would reappoint Ms. Whitfield to the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council?
Yes, sir, we'll be glad to do that.
McQuinn is the backup on that. I don't know if the governor points a backup on that, or is that the way it works?
He doesn't, but he actually might like her more than me, I think. He might actually like her more than me as a person on there, as our one Republican representative. So, well, I'm happy to do it, though, if they'll take me.
Knowing that I live North County, I remember, I wanted to do that before, so if I can, I'd love to, whatever is involved with that.
All right, so...
And then I'm hearing Ms. Ayala, so maybe as the alternative?
I should be the alternative?
Sure, whatever you guys want.
I think it's an appointed position?
I believe it's appointed.
It is appointed. So, you have to go through a whole application process, which I've done before, but then when the government changed, it took me off, and then I never got back on again, so I'm happy to try again. It's usually during session that they decide whether or not to appoint, so if Ms. McQuinn wants to try, I really do think you'd be more successful than I've been.
Okay. So, it's changed a little bit, Dr. Fanoi, when he contacts the governor's office, it would be Mrs. McQuinn that we'd like him to appoint to that?
Mr. Tierney, please make a note of that, and we'll communicate with them, we'll take care of that.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Ayala?
Ms. Brill would like to take over the Community Alliance, so I'd like to cede my role there and let her take over.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up afterwards, since Ms. Ayala has taken on a lot of the committees, I'll take back the Community Alliance gladly.
Okay, so you're taking back Community Alliance, and Ms. Ayala's coming back off? Got it. The Urban League of Palm Beach County? Dr. Robinson?
That should just be removed.
Sorry?
That should just be removed.
Removed?
Oh.
The Value Adjustment Board, I've been serving on that. I'm currently serving as the vice chair of the Value Adjustment Board. I'd like to stay there. There is, once a year, there's a meeting that lasts like five minutes. It takes me 45 minutes to get up there to county commission, and 45 minutes to get back, so I'd like to have somebody that's an alternate that would be able to go to that one meeting a year that takes five minutes.
I think I usually am the one who goes. I'm happy to do it again.
And the last committee is the Wellness Promotion Task Force. It was Ms. Whitfield, and then Mrs. Andrews is the backup.
I'm happy to be there still. I used to work in that group, so you know, I'm very familiar with it, but if somebody else really wants to go, they can.
And I always work with Ms. Whitfield, and we work on a lot of it together, so I can be a part of that with her.
Mrs., I'm sorry, Mrs. Andrews, I guess I just got old ears. Are you saying that you want to stay as a backup?
I will, yes, absolutely.
Okay. So, we went through them all. Does anybody want to make any changes before we take a vote?
I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
For the Value Adjustment Board, do we need a second alternate?
We can have a second alternate, because sometimes if Ms. Whitfield can't make it, I know Mr. Shaw would go sometimes to Ms. Whitfield, so would you like to be the back...
I'd gladly throw my name in for second alternate in the event you can't attend.
Okay. All right, so we've got them all out. Anybody want to make any changes? We need a motion to approve it as...
Mr. Chairman, before you make that motion, Ms. Bass?
You were going to add Greater Florida Consortium?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the Greater Florida Consortium.
Oh, I did actually speak to Mr. Shaw about that today. I would love to do that, if that's okay.
I don't see any other hands, so that's, so the Greater Florida Consortium will be Ms. Whitfield?
And is that everybody for the, is there a backup for that? Because I think we all are a part of the Greater Florida Consortium.
Yeah, I think we are. It's just to have one person be the person who goes?
Oh, okay. I'll be the backup.
Well, and just so you know, it's, everybody does vote, but you would have the opportunity to become president because they rotate, so that's why you need an appointee.
So, Ms. Brill will be the backup behind Mrs. Whitfield?
No, it's Ms. Andrews, right here.
Andrews. Okay. Board clerk, we have them all now? We need a motion to approve them as we went through them? Motion by Ms. Whitfield, seconded by Ms. Ayala. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I recommend the board approves Stormit Norm as the Business Community Representative of the Value Adjustment Board. The Value Adjustment Board has five members, two county commissioners, one school board member, one member of the public that represents the business community, and one member of the public that just represents citizens at large. Mr. Norm has served as, long before I got on the Value Adjustment Board, he was this board's appointee to the, to that, it's a statutory guided committee, and it requires the five members, so if we take a motion to keep Mr., he does a great job. He shows up at all the meetings. Motion by Ms. Brill, I mean, sorry, by Mrs. McQuinn, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Ms. Bass, would you notify the Value Adjustment Board that we've reappointed Mr. Norm for that position? And that looks like the last item. Did we do the organization documents? We did those. Okay. All right, at this point, we can take a motion to adjourn this meeting. Motion by Ms. Whitfield, seconded by Ms. Brill. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The next meeting will start at 5:00. It's an advertised meeting at 5:00 PM, so we'll take a break until 5:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting of the School Board of Palm Beach County to order at 5:04 PM. Will the clerk take the roll, please?
District One, Barbara McQuinn?
Here.
District Two, Alexandria Ayala?
Here.
District Three, Karen Brill?
Here.
District Four, Erica Whitfield?
Here.
District Five, Frank Barbieri?
Here.
District Six, Marsha Andrews?
Here.
District Seven, Deborah Robinson?
Here.
And we have all seven board members present. The board has just completed its annual reorganization meeting where three board members were sworn in, Alexandria Ayala, Barbara McQuinn, and myself. Congratulations to this new, to the new school board member in District Two, Alexandria Ayala, and to Barbara McQuinn in District One, who is beginning her second term. The board will now participate in the regular board meeting. Viewers and listeners can access the meeting today by either watching on Comcast Channels 234 and 235, U-verse Channel 99, or by using the YouTube link on our webpage, palmbeachschools.org. We also offer a listening-only option, which the public can access by calling 561-357-5900 or toll-free at 1-866-930-7015. The meeting ID is 1561-880-1124, pound sign. Also joining us on our dais today is Superintendent Dr. Donald Fanoi, General Counsel Sean Bernard, Inspector General Teresa Michael, Board Clerk Carol Bass, and Palm Beach County Student Council President Santiago Alvarez. Senior staff members will join us periodically as directed by the superintendent. This meeting is being transcribed by a closed captioner, so remember to speak at a reasonable pace. Will everyone please stand again for the pledge of allegiance to be led by Superintendent Dr. Donald Fanoi? I'd like to welcome any public speakers who are joining us in person today. While your attendance here at the board office is appreciated, please be mindful of important safety protocols that the district now has in place to conform with COVID-19 safety guidelines. Please respect this cautionary warning that in the event of interference with the orderly processes of the meeting, failure to follow the safety protocols and procedures, or otherwise disruptive conduct, this conduct will result in removal of the person from the meeting. Please abide by these protocols so Palm Beach County School Police Officers do not have to take any action. We have two items that have been added today for Good Cause. Item AD1, authorization to request a formal Attorney General opinion regarding board and district advisory committee meetings. Good Cause exists for adding this agenda item to request an Attorney General opinion seeking to allow meetings of committees subject to the Sunshine Laws to be conducted by means of communications, media technology during a public health emergency. The governor's executive order that allows these virtual meetings expired on October 31st, 2020. The COVID-19 pandemic remains a national health emergency and has recently peaked, including in Florida. The Public Health Emergency Declaration and the governor's executive order issued on November 3rd, 2020 continues for 60 days, and the State Surgeon General's order on October 23rd continues for 60 days. A danger exists justifying the board's attempt to protect the health and safety of committee members, staff, and the public by seeking an opinion from the Attorney General that these virtual meetings may occur for these Sunshine Committees during a pandemic. The other item added for Good Cause is P2 Personal Addendum. Good Cause exists to add this item so employees can begin in their new position as soon as possible. Mr. Superintendent, are you withdrawing any items?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. TO2, My Career Shines Career Planning System.
Board members, are you pulling any items? Seeing none, we need a motion to prove the agenda has been modified. Motion by Mrs. Brill, seconded by Ms. Ayala. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Disclosures and abstentions, any board members? Seeing none, Mr. Superintendent, comments?
Yes, sir. The opportunity for each of us to share board comments is one of the many ways the district communicates important information to our students, staff, parents, and the community. To help all of our stakeholders remain as informed as possible, my team and I also share communication through direct messages sent home to students and staff, our district website, our mobile app, weekly electronic newsletter, social media, in-person and virtual community updates, and Facebook Live events. Every two weeks, the district hosts a Facebook Live discussion on various topics important to our community. As these are live presentations, questions are encouraged and answered in real time. This Thursday, the district will host its fourth Facebook Live of the 2020-2021 school year. School Police Chief Frank Kitserow will discuss everything from school security to the importance of students not sharing passwords, to behavioral health matters, spectator and visitor COVID-19 protocols, and the new ASHA program, and more. I encourage you to stay tuned, stay informed by taking part in this discussion, which takes place at 5:00 PM Thursday on the district's Facebook page. In these times of rapidly evolving decision-making, it is especially important that the lines of communication are open and flow in two directions, so that my team and I can best serve your needs. I'd also like to point out that Friday, November 20th, is Future Teachers of America Day. As a district, we take great pride in cultivating our own talent. Through our Early Childhood Teacher Education Choice Program, students are provided with teaching experiences on campus to prepare them for a career in education. Who better to teach our children than those who are already vested in our community? This Friday is also World Children's Day. The purpose is promoting international togetherness, awareness among children worldwide, and improving children's welfare. A time to celebrate and a time to demand action for child's rights. It is also Homeless and Hunger Awareness Month, as we go into the Thanksgiving break and are certainly thankful for the many blessings we each have in our lives. Let's take the time to remember that this is a difficult time for many across our county[1676.22] time for many across our county who struggle with homelessness and hunger. Today, at the district's 97 grab-and-go feeding sites, the food service team distributed six days' worth of free meals. This Thursday, we will distribute another six days' worth of meals at these sites. Plus, recipients will each receive a 10-pound box of produce. Extra meals are being provided this week as those school food distribution sites will not be open next week. You can always get the latest information on food distribution by visiting palmbeachschools.org/feedingsites. I want to wish you, wish all of our families a happy and healthy Thanksgiving holiday. And now, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Dr. Elena Alonso, if you could come to the podium, please, Director of the Palm Beach County Health Department. We are so appreciative to have her join us today to share a few updates from the Health Department. Dr. Alonso?
Do you want me to talk without the mask, or can you hear me with the mask? Okay. I talk pretty loud when I have to. Thank you very much for inviting me, Dr. Fanoi. Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here with you. I'm just going to give, I got the chance to talk to the Board of County Commissioners today, and I gave them the updates of what's going on here in Palm Beach County, as well as what's going on nationally. I'm not going to bore you with all the slides and the numbers. I'm just going to tell you that at this point, there are 48 states that are having increasing numbers of COVID, which is quite alarming. Some of them are in very bad shape in terms of hospital surge. Because it has spread to so many states, they are not able to recruit nurses and doctors for their hospitals. New York had the advantage that when they were recruiting, they were recruiting from states that were basically with having no problems, and so they had lots of help from different states to help out. Now, because it's occurring at all the states at the same time, it's very difficult. They're running out of supplies. Some staff have been on the fifth 24 hours or 12-hour shifts, so they're very tired. They're exhausted. So it's not pretty. It's not a pretty picture that the country's looking at right now. Florida, we are seeing that our numbers have stayed very steady in terms of our county numbers. Dade County has the most numbers, followed by Broward, and followed by Palm Beach, and then the other two metro counties, Hillsborough and Orange, which much lower numbers. I don't want to bore you with numbers, but just to say that our numbers have been steady. We were doing very, very good. Our numbers were coming down. We had a plan to open slowly. That plan got sidebar when everything opened all at one time. We were down to a 2% positivity rate, which now everybody knows that the daily positivity is the number that really tells you the amount of virus that you have in your community. The goal of five, which now is no longer Dr. Alonso's goal, but all the CDC and everybody recognizes that number as the number that indicates that you have control of the virus in your community. We had been down below that number for several days, and we were very proud of it. We were doing a really good job. Those numbers have all increased in the past three weeks significantly. I expect that they will continue to increase because of the holidays, because it's now flu season. We will have people going out, flying out of Palm Beach County into those 46 states that are having very high COVID numbers. They're going to be going through airports. They're going to be in contact with TSA, and they're going to probably come back home or get positive on the way back from their vacations. We're also going to have a lot of people coming down to Florida. Florida remains one of the destinations for all these 46 states to get away from the COVID and come to Florida and relax and be able to go out and hang out by the beach. That's going to create a problem. That's going to bring the numbers up in Palm Beach County and throughout South Florida and through the rest of Florida. The panhandle of Florida, which at one time had, had no cases at all, now the cases there are increasing. If you take a look at the, I hope you all take advantage of the floridahealth.gov COVID dashboard, which shows you now a map that it shows by rate, by population. And what you see are orange and dark orange colors, and you see Dade in the very dark. They have a rate of about 6% or per hundred thousand, 6,000 per hundred thousand. And this is a very good number because it compares then the different communities, the different counties by their population. It's not the same to have a county like Palm Beach with 1.5 million people have 30,000 cases versus a tiny little county that only has 1,000 or 800 people in it to have that same number, right? So it's much more, it's much harder for these little counties to have large numbers. And so what we're seeing is across the top of Florida that they hadn't even been aware of the virus, now those counties are struggling. Now, what's, one of the things along those counties is that they're very poor counties. They have a lot of underserved people. They have very little access to healthcare, to maternity care. So it's not unusual that we're seeing this virus go to those communities of the underserved, and so we have to pay close attention to that. So what does that mean for your school? In my opinion, the only tool that we have now at our disposal is the very first one that I mentioned at the very first meeting, when I, what I explained what a pandemic was, and I explained what the virus was. We have to use these things. Face coverings. We have to maintain six-foot distancing. We have to wash your hands, use sanitizers. When you touch things, assume that you're touching the virus. When you see someone, assume that that person is positive. A lot of people are asymptomatic. This is very similar to AIDS. In the early start of the AIDS epidemic, people used to think that they could tell who had AIDS by looking at them. You couldn't. So when you had sex with somebody with HIV, you usually caught it because you thought you were safe and you weren't. So this is very similar, same thing. Same, you know, discrimination and fear, very, very similar to the HIV epidemic. So we have to use our masks. We have to use our distancing. Now, the other part is the close contact areas, and we talk about the three Cs. That means don't go into crowded places. So if you are shopping and that day there's a sale going on and everybody's rushing to aisle five, forget the sale, stay away from aisle five. Stay away from crowds. The second thing is not to go into enclosed areas with poor circulation. So what happened with the football team, I think these are the football guys, right? How many? Raise your hand. You got half of the team here. And they want to play, right? Yeah, okay, I got you. What happened, they, they were inside the bus for quite a while. They got some rain, and so they had the opportunity to spread the virus. Not everybody got it. Those people that maintained their masks, by the way, they were very helpful. They were very cooperative. The parents were very cooperative, and our contact tracers, thank you very much for that. It's very important. Because of the information they gave us, we were able to quarantine 62 of the players. Five of those quarantined players became positive. If we had let them stay in the schools, those people would have spread it inside the school. So even though you had an event that was unfortunate, we were able to contain it and not spread it to the school. That's what contact tracing does. So we're going to keep working as hard as we can to make sure that we continue to do that. The other important thing is that parents, if you're listening or you're watching this, please, if you are asked to be in quarantine, that means your children have to be in quarantine. They should not go to school for the same reason that we quarantined those 62 kids. That made it possible for us to contain it and not spread in the school. Right now, you have had no secondary cases. What that means is the cases of people that are positive are being, are becoming positive outside of school. Teachers, students, they're coming from the outside with the virus to school. And so by doing contact tracing, we can eliminate, we can contain that, and you can continue doing your classes and your programs that you're doing. So the bottom line is, yes, we're going to be faced with a lot of new cases now coming into Thanksgiving. I was hoping we could hold off until December, but I think by the end of Thanksgiving, we're going to see very high numbers. And what's going to make people do something? The one thing that they will pay attention to is when the hospitals get into hospital surge, which is what happened last time. So when the hospital starts saying, hey, we need to put up a unit because we can't hold them anymore and our ICU beds are full, we've already seen them increasing their numbers and having more people coming to the hospital. The other thing is that because these young folks are getting the COVID and not the adults and the elderly, they're recuperating just fine. They look very healthy today. And they are not getting sick. They're not going to the hospital, and of course, they're not dying. So that's very important. So that's keeping our death rate down. Also, it's called practicing medicine, and we practice. So we got the hang of it. We got the hang of how to treat these patients. We're treating them better. We're keeping them off the ventilators, and they're not dying. So that's a good thing. Practice makes perfect in medicine. We have more tools now. We have the Rendezivir. We have the cordis, the steroids that we can use. We have some new medicines being developed. And then finally, the good news is that now we're going to have several vaccines available. Pfizer came out with the first. Now, it's interesting because all this information that has come out from Pfizer and now Moderno is information that they're giving to their stockholders. Their stocks are going through the roof. So this is information being given. It is not the usual way that we get information about vaccines. Usually, it's published in a journal with FDA approval and so forth. We haven't gotten that yet, and we will. But for right now, we know that Pfizer had a 90% efficacy, which is fantastic in a vaccine. Moderno came and beat them. They said they have 94.5 efficacy with their vaccine. And so those were, those are things that will be tested, and the FDA will go through that, and we'll see what those numbers are. But that doesn't mean we're out of the woods yet because now they have to go into production. Once they get the FDA approval, they have to go into production of the vaccine. And this vaccine, and, and there's four other ones that are also all doing the same thing, is a new revolutionary way of doing vaccines. They're going to use messenger RNA, a little piece of information that's going to go into your body and make it look like it's the spikes that are around, the coronavirus is called Corona because of the little spikes around it. It's going to make your body think that those little spikes are coming in, and it's going to make you make antibodies against them with this message that's on that messenger RNA. This is a revolution in, in terms of vaccines. This has never been done this way, and it brings a lot of anticipation of what other vaccines will be able to be had as a result of this. Maybe even for HIV or some of the other vaccines that we have not been able to create. So it's very, very exciting from the scientific. For us, the vaccine is going to have to be produced in enough quantity, and it's going to be divvied up through the federal government to the different states. And it's going to be the elderly first, healthcare workers, and first responders. So I do not expect that we're going to get sufficient vaccine to take care of everybody at one time. That's impossible. When you start producing, it'll slowly be divvied out, probably to the areas that have the worst need. So we will be getting that. For the general public, probably by April, they'll be making enough that, that's the anticipation by some of the people from the CDC. They're saying that probably around April, we'll start seeing mass distribution to the general public. But it's very important that we obviously use the vaccine first on those people that are in most need, the elderly, nursing homes. The military will probably get the vaccine, first responders, and healthcare workers. So that's what's in the horizon. In the meantime, the tool that we have to implement, what you have to implement at the schools, is making sure that everybody continues to wear their masks, maintain their distance, and follow all the other hygiene rules. Your school has been doing really wonderful. We have not had secondary cases. The new cases I have distributed, you can look on the Florida dashboard, and you see the age distribution is at 15 to 44-year-old. And the information that we're getting is that they're becoming positive at parties, large gatherings, nightclubs, bars, and restaurants. And it's usually when they're drinking because when you drink, you can't drink with your mask on, so you have to take off your mask, and that's when you get in close proximity with people, and that's where if a group of 15 go and one is positive, all 15 catch it because they're all in close contact with each other. So avoid crowded spaces, closed-in areas, and areas where you can't maintain the distancing. Okay? Do you want me to take questions, or what's your process here?
Unless the board has questions. Ms. Whitfield?
Thank you so much. I did, would like to ask one quick question. I've had some concerns about our current dashboard that have brought up with staff, and we've been looking at a way to better represent the data. Currently, our dashboard shows cumulative totals, and so one of the thoughts that I had was how can we split that up to be more representative of what's really going on in the schools in the moment? So right now, if you are positive in August, in November, that number is still counted as a positive case, and that's obviously not, not true. So I would love some guidance from, you know, the Department of Health, if you can share with us how we could better talk about schools in, and the number of cases that we truly do have.
We did the same thing. We had exactly the same problem, and at first, it was great because we could see where the, the areas were, had more, you know, we could look at these ZIP codes and see which ZIP codes we were having problems at, and then eventually, everything turned red. You remember? All Palm Beach County was red. All Miami was red. So that's not useful to you anymore. What you need to know is probably monthly, the new cases. So you can have your cumulative and then say for the week of, we do the census tracts, for example, for the cases now. And so we have our, our analyst give us the cases by census tracts, and then we plot that by color. And less than five cases, we don't put anything because it's too easy to then identify people. But if we have, you know, and, and we have them colored, like between five to 14 cases is one color, and so more than 60 then becomes a darker color. So you could do something like that, or just simply put the numbers by week or by month so that you can get an idea of what the new cases are. That will help you to know what's going on and at what school what's happening.
Ms. Andrews?
And thank you, Dr. Alonso, for being here. I want to thank all of the teachers, the parents, the staff that sent us the emails because they were worried that we may be closing down our schools. And as we see the cases increasing in Palm Beach County, as we look across the country, we, we know that we're in a different phase now, as you've just said. And one of the things I've shared with Dr. Fanoi and Mr. Tierney is that we're reading too. We're listening, listening to Dr. Fauci. You're our Dr. Fauci right here in Palm Beach County. So we want to see you, and I know that you're having videos with, with the superintendent, but when we're having a board meeting, especially now that we're going home for Thanksgiving, we don't know what's going to happen within the next week or so, and we need you to come back because I think when parents are talking to the board, we're not the medical experts. You are. Not the superintendent, you are, and you're our Dr. Fauci. And I would like to make sure that you're on our list. So as we look at ourselves and we see that the cases are increasing, that you will make yourself available. I see you at the county commission, and I learn a lot. And we need you right here because with the largest employer in Palm Beach County, with almost 200,000 students, and we're doing okay right now, we still have to stay diligent in getting it done to keep everybody safe. We need you in front of us as much as possible. So Dr. Fanoi, I'm hoping through Dr., Mr. Tierney, that we can make sure that we have, especially when we're having a major board meeting, for the monthly board meeting, we get some updates because we are in a pandemic, and we need to hear from our medical expert.
That's not a problem. I'm working 24 hours a day, no problem.
Dr. Alonso and I talked last night, and she's, Ms. Tierney's on it. We'll take care of that.
Any other questions for Dr. Alonso? Dr. Robinson?
It's not really a question. I was just itching a little bit. So with the comparison to HIV, I know what you were saying, like we both lived through that and how it changed our practices. So with universal precautions and assuming everybody had HIV to protect yourself, and, and then the changes with H1N1, that changed our practice too. We stopped shaking hands and so forth. And this is going to be a pivotal point in medicine too, in terms of how we change our practice. So I know where you were coming from, but I just want to make it clear when she did that comparison, the transmission's not the same. So just in case there's anybody who thought that maybe she was saying that the transmission of this virus is similar to that of HIV, I just want to be crystal clear, it's not. This is respiratory. HIV is body secretions and blood, and so I just don't want any confusion because, like, that's why we're doing six feet and a mask. Thank you.
Very good point. I'll remember to say that next time I make that comparison. Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Alonso.
Glad to help out.
We'll talk again next week. At this time, I would like to have our Deputy Superintendent Keith Oswald come forward and introduce some of our new principals who've been newly assigned this year. Mr. Oswald?
Thank you, Dr. Fanoi, and good afternoon, board members. We have a number of new leaders that have been running our schools for some time, and due to COVID and those challenges, we haven't been able to give them a proper time to introduce themselves to you, but now that we've kind of got this down here in the boardroom again, we want to have them have the opportunity to say hello to you all. So first, that started back off in July, and I should say that these three leaders knew exactly what they were getting themselves into when they applied for these principalships, you know, leading during the most challenging time I think that any of us have seen in education through COVID. So first- So first, starting back in July, end of July at Pointyana Elementary, please give a warm welcome for Tanya McDowell.
So I tried to keep it a secret and somehow it got out, so my teachers are here to support me. Good evening. Can you hear me? Can I, I don't, I don't want to touch the mics. Okay. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Barbieri, board members, Superintendent Fanoi and distinguished guests. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Thank you Superintendent Dr. Fanoi and Deputy Superintendent Mr. Oswald for entrusting Pointyana STEM Elementary to me during such a difficult time. This moment would not be possible without the support and mentorship of my former principal, Mr. James Thomas at Elsie Swain Middle School in Green Acres. Thank you to my regional superintendent, Dr. Peter Locata, for your unwavering support over the last few years. Thank you to Mr. Jeff Peg, my instructional superintendent, for being my mentor, leading with kindness and setting a stellar example every single day. And I would be remiss if I did not mention the phenomenal women of Palm Beach County that have taken me under their wings and provided mentorship and guidance to me over the years. Thank you to Ms. Rose Backus, who hired me into the district as a learning team facilitator, and she just recently retired. Thank you to Ms. Dwan Moore Ross and Dr. Matthew Shoemaker for giving me the opportunity to serve as a literacy specialist in the phenomenal Glades. And to many of the principals that have wrapped their arms around me, answered my questions and instilled in me the importance of leading learning communities within your schools. Ms. Adrian Howard, Ms. Bernadette Standish, Ms. Tereshia Thomas, Ms. Janine Robinson, Ms. Jill Robinson, my South Area Principal Mentor, who during COVID is also mentoring a new principal, Ms. Shante King, Dr. Lori Ryapell, Dr. Monique McTeer and Ms. Mellon. Is it, it is imperative that on this special day, I thank my parents, who as Jamaican immigrants came to this country in the 1980s for greater opportunities. Thank you for encouraging me, supporting me and pushing me to work hard and reach for the stars. Your strength and fearlessness inspire me every day and I'm honored to make you proud. To my family that are here today, my husband, James, and my three children, Roman and Zion, who are students at my school, to Trinity, my adopted baby girl, thank you for your constant support, patience, your prayers and words of encouragement. I love you. And in closing, to my new school family, the Pointyana Pandas, while this school year may have started differently than before, my goals as the new principal remain the same. First, to honor the history of the school from the early 1900s, as one of the first teachers of the school, Ms. Blanche Gertman worked at the school when it was known as Boynton Colored Elementary. I'd like to create a collaborative and equitable environment where students can learn and grow by providing all students with high quality instruction, whether they are brick and mortar or virtual learners, to cultivate a positive climate while creating a sense of pride and belonging for all students, parents and community members. To my board member, Dr. Deborah Robinson, I look forward to getting to know you and working with you in the future. And finally, to my instruction, to all of the instructional leaders of tomorrow and all, as your principal, I am here to support you. And thank you to my dedicated teachers and staff, my assistant principal, Dr. Valcourt, and the hardworking students at Pointyana Elementary in Boynton Beach. I am honored to serve as your principal. Go Pandas and have a panderific day. Thank you.
Congratulations, Principal McDowell. And next, our next leader coming out from the Glades, Dr. Sandra Moreau, Oliver Leading, Pioneer Park Elementary School.
Good evening and bonsoir, board members, Dr. Fanoi, Mr. Oswald. I'd like to thank Dr. McTeer and Mrs. Moore and the entire Glades community for this opportunity to lead such an amazing school filled with hardworking teachers and staff and the most wonderful students and families you will ever meet. I'm from Haiti and came to this country at the age of nine. I have a great support system that I'd like to thank, including my amazing children. They can tell you stories about all the times that mama had to take on three or four jobs when she was single. My wonderful new husband, well, he's not new anymore, uh, for the past of our eight years. My beautiful and strong mom, my nieces and nephews, whom I call my second set of children, my wonderful siblings for always being there and believing in me. I know that my dad, my brother and my grandma who helped raise me and who are no longer with us are smiling down on me. I'd also like to thank my friends and my school family. You have always stood by me. I am very proud to work in the Glades community and appreciate all of the amazing support from district leadership, all the principals who have reached out, as well as board member Mrs. Andrews for your support over all the years that I've known you. A special thanks to my mentor and the first person to encourage me to go into leadership, Dr. Janice Culver, and for her continued friendship and support over the years. I hope that I am making her very proud. I love my job and hope to continue motivating, supporting our students and staff in this journey. It's a very difficult time right now. And at my school, we focus a lot on the social emotional side for our students and for our teachers and staff. So I'd like to thank you again for selecting me as principal of the wonderful Pioneer Park. I am honored, I'm humbled, but most of all grateful and thankful. Merci beaucoup. Good night.
Congratulations, Principal Oliver. And our last school, Pierce Hammock Elementary, our most recent approved principal, Ms. Katie Christinger.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having me here. It is such an honor to become the new principal of Pierce Hammock Elementary School. I want to thank you for the opportunity and I want to give a special thanks to my husband, Sean, my son Dylan, my parents and all the people that have helped me along the way, starting with Dr. Long, Ms. Bishop, Dr. Lee, Dr. Ionetti, Nicole Daly and Dr. Fanoi and Mr. Oswald, thank you for believing in me. I feel so privileged to be a product of Palm Beach County schools, to have this opportunity to give back to a district that has given so much to me. My goal at Pierce Hammock is to create lifelong learners, to help all students become global thinkers and become and reach their fullest potential. I'm so excited to have this opportunity. In the past week and a half, I've been working with Pierce Hammock and I've been welcomed. And I have to tell you, I have had so much support with the leadership here at the district and not including my area superintendent, Ms. Bishop, but also the fellow principals who have reached out to me on their own to make sure that I'm supported. I will not let anyone down and I'm looking forward to continue to lead this school and be a part of such a wonderful district. Thank you for this amazing opportunity.
Congratulations again to all of our principals and we'll be back again next month with another principal vacancy.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Board comments, Ms. McQuinn?
No, thanks.
Ms. Ayala?
None, thank you.
Ms. Brill?
Do I get their time? Okay. Well, I just wanted to say that with Thanksgiving right around the corner, I want to share some feel-good events with you tonight. First, as I have done in previous years, I participated in reading for the record at Manatee Elementary School. This year was a little different. I read to VPK virtually. Yes, I said VPK and virtually. And those adorable little munchkins were so attentive, I could not believe how focused they were. I have no doubt that we are creating a generation of technology wizards. I also want to give a big shout out to Deborah Tendrich, whose Eat Better, Feel, Live Better nonprofit organization, through their Teachers Giving, is giving teachers turkeys for Thanksgiving at some of our Delray Beach schools. As Ms. Tendrich has said, teachers inspire the smallest hearts to grow big enough to change the world. Thank you, teachers. And finally, in March of this past year, right before we closed due to COVID-19, COBRA, the Coalition of Boynton West Residential Associations, of which I am a proud delegate, donated its second buddy bench to one of our schools. This time it was, it went to Hidden Oaks Elementary School. And so yesterday, author of Be a Buddy, Not a Bully, Loverly Sheridan, joined Principal Sharri Brema Camp, Assistant Principal Chris Schroder, President of COBRA, Beth Rappaport and me for an inspiring recognition of COBRA and the school's Buddy Ambassador Program. I'll let you see for yourselves. Mark, could you please roll it?
Good morning, boys and girls. My name is Lovely Sheridan and I am the author of the book called Be a Buddy, Not a Bully. And he looked at Jessie and Ken and he said, you guys are really cool. Can we be friends? And Ken said, you know, sure, I love making new friends. I really just want to continue to promote the importance of kindness and to treat others the way we like to be treated and to create a culture of kindness in schools. When I call the buddy up, I want you to give a big round of applause because it's an honor to be a buddy ambassador.
It's really nice to have the community involved and I think it really helps the parents also see that, wow, my child really is a buddy and not a bully.
I just have to take a moment to thank COBRA, the Coalition of Boynton West Residential Associations. They do so much for our schools. Their education committee providing support, providing school supplies. Here we have the second buddy bench.
The buddy bench is not just any bench, it is a very special bench.
COBRA has been around for 40 years. We are a quality of life organization and we firmly believe that supporting education in our area is really integral to quality of life.
Let me tell you, they are not just sponsors who sponsor the bench, they are dedicated to creating safe spaces. We have to provide children the tools that they need to thrive, to be the best version of themselves. And a lot of times it is just with these simple stories like these and examples like this and rewarding them.
Thank you. And so I just wanted to say it was just really wonderful to see something more normal these days, even though we were social distancing. And again, to see how the community steps up in all of these efforts to help support our students. So thank you. Thank you, everyone. We have a lot to be thankful for. I hope everybody has a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you so much. Um, I wanted to talk briefly about a project also going on in Delray right now that I just think is so special and wonderful and I wanted to say a huge thank you to, um, the city and to the Chamber for their work. Um, they have dedicated bus shelters throughout the city and actually, um, taken time out to thank our schools and recognize our teachers, uh, through their Bus Bench Program. And I just think it is so special, um, that they are putting the advertisement to really recognize the work that's going on in our schools right now and the dedication of our teachers. I think it's a wonderful thing, um, when you take time out to thank people. And so I really appreciate that Delray, um, the city and the Chamber are both taking time out through their, um, efforts there to recognize, um, our schools and they're doing, uh, specific ones for each school, which I think is really special. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention, um, is the work being done around hunger in our community, especially as Thanksgiving is coming up. Um, this is something that's always been near and dear to my heart and, um, I, a couple of things I wanted to mention. First, our school food service department is so beyond amazing. I wish you all could realize, um, like I do, how they move mountains every day. And it is, uh, just so heartening to see people care for children and families in this way. Uh, they have really struggled a lot during this last, uh, few months with children not being in school. And so we are not able to feed the levels of children that we normally do. So before schools ended in March that year, we had already served 29 million meals. And since then, the meals that we have served have been under, um, five million. So it's, if you look at the numbers, we're not quite getting to the number of children we have. So our school food service department has been thinking outside the box and just going above and beyond trying to get food into these, um, families' homes. And I mean, I, I really am looking forward to this, um, being public knowledge, the way that everybody, uh, can see what's been going on and, and hopefully in January, it'll even be more. But I wanted to put a huge thank you out there for all the dedicated workers in our school food service department who have come in even during COVID, during our worst times and made sure that children were fed. Um, two other groups really stood out to me in this Thanksgiving season. Um, as Ms. Brill mentioned, Deborah Tendrich, um, from Eat Better, Live Better, um, is giving out turkeys to the teachers. And then today I had an opportunity to work with Florida Crystals and Robert Norvell, who donates, um, food every year to students in West Palm Beach and then even One Lake Worth School, um, to, and on Palm Beach as well, at Palm Beach Public. They just get donations from the community in the most grassroots way possible to make sure that our children have food at this time of year. And it just, it makes me so happy to see the community pull together to make sure we feed everyone we can. This year is particularly difficult for so many of our families. And so I just want to say a huge thank you to everyone who puts their time and effort and their funds behind these projects, making sure that we are feeding our families. It is the most important thing that I think we can be doing right now is taking care of each other. And I just want to say a huge thank you and a big, huge thank you to all of our teachers, our staff members, everyone here, um, who has been so dedicated this year. I, I want to remind everyone that this district really has not had a vacation. No one has taken time off and, um, it's because of you and because of the work that you do and that you have continued to do during all this time that we are in such a good place. And I know it can be a challenging place, but compared to the rest of the country, we are really rocking it. And I just want to say a huge thank you to all of our staff members and happy Thanksgiving and please, please, please be safe. We, we want to get through this time and then hopefully get into Christmas and not have any, um, challenges, uh, come up that are even worse. So I just want to say everyone, um, happy Thanksgiving and thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Whitfield. Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you and good afternoon to everyone. Yes, we are in the Thanksgiving season, giving thanks. I want to thank the students, the teachers, the parents, the principals, the district staff. You're doing a terrific job with brick and mortar and remote learning for our children. We are in a pandemic, as we know. Even though we are making it through, we are in a pandemic. Some of us have been sick, in isolation. Some of us have passed away. Our prayers go out to all of our district family who has been suffering. I'd like to take a moment, a personal privilege, uh, Mr. Barbieri and to the superintendent, because I'm looking out in the audience and I see my children out here from Palm Beach Central and the coach. And I want them to stand up so I can say something personal to them today, the football team. You are out here, stand up everybody from Palm Beach Central, the coaches, the teachers, the staff who, who are with you today. You've been through a lot and I'm so proud of you. Some of your classmates and your football team are in isolation, getting well. You have done the job of being an athlete. I am so proud of you being academic as well as athletic. They both go together. I visited your school just yesterday to meet with your principal and you have a superstar principal in Mr. Edgecombe. You have superstar coaches. I'm talking to your region superintendent because I want you to know that we hear you. We hear that you want to play football. We hear that you want to do well academically. And I'm listening to your coaches and your parents, who will be speaking here tonight and who have been speaking to the district. And I promise you, as your board member, I'm going to be working closely with the superintendent and the district administration to make sure that you're taken care of. Scholarships are on the line for you to go to college. We want to make sure you don't miss a beat. We want to make sure you have the FEMS to present yourself to recruiters when they come to Palm Beach County. You're what- You're what Palm Beach County is great about. And it is about our students, our teachers, our staff, and our coaches. So you're sitting through all of this tonight, but my love pours out to you to tell you, hold on. Help is on the way to take care of some of these problems you're thinking about now for your football future and for the questions that you need us to answer to make sure that you're safe and that you get an opportunity to play. So thank you so much for being here tonight. And I wanted everybody to recognize you because you're utmost important, you're awesome, and you're fantastic. Let's give them a big hand. Palm Beach Central. Thank you, team. But I want to tell you, when I visited your school yesterday and I talked to your principal and I walked to the cafeteria and I walked the halls with the principal and I saw the students eating lunch, they were separated, they were wearing their masks. I saw six-foot dividers where people were. I saw them really doing everything that they were told to do. And I was so proud because you are from a proud heritage, your school, Palm Beach Central. And I want you to know, to tell the team that's in isolation, we're praying, this whole school board is praying, this whole school district is praying for them to get well so that they can get back on the field. And I want your coaches to know, your voices are heard. You're the ones on the line every day with our children, and your voices are heard. Your principal told me yesterday, he showed me all of your names, all of the students who had made it back, those that were in isolation. And he said, "We're going to take care of the students." This was the principal, the region superintendent, everybody said it to me. "I will be following you up to see what's going on as we move through this process." But we're working hard to take care of all of you, to take care of everyone. Thank you for wearing your face mats. Thank you for having your six-feet distances, your hand washing, the testing, contract tracing, your isolation, staying away from crowds. I saw that when I was at Palm Beach Central on yesterday. And I talk not just to Palm Beach Central, but for all of the schools here in Palm Beach County. I'm talking to all of the students, the teachers, the staff, the principals. I thank you. Because as we go through this Thanksgiving, you're going home for a while. You got to remember everything that you did here in the schools to stay safe, to stay apart, to wear your mask, to do the things that's going to keep you safe when you go home for Thanksgiving. And when you come back, we're going to be waiting on you, whether you're doing remote or whether you're doing brick and mortar. We're going to be here for you. And it truly is about our schools, our students. So as we take this Thanksgiving break, remember safety measures. Remember to stay safe, and remember, we love you. And even though you read about all the things happening around the world, we're in a tough place all over the country and the world. But you belong to us, right here in our family, students, teachers, staff, schools, all of you. It's all about making sure that you're safe. And I want you to have a wonderful Thanksgiving. And we're going to keep all these safety measures within our heart, within our reach, so that we can be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So I'm going to continue with my newly established practice of... That is the wrong slide. Okay, let's see. Okay, that's... yay, okay. So I decided, what, a month and a half or so ago, that I needed, especially as we talk about working towards equity, that I would start showing data. I get consumed by data. And I want to thank Mr. Howard and his team because they listen to me as I focus on data and work through data and analyze data and talk about data and try to figure out what it tells us to do. And so today, I'm just going to show you some high-level English Language Arts data. You recall that last month, I showed kindergarten readiness. And just as in kindergarten readiness, we will see throughout this data that poverty is a predictor of underperformance. When we look at race and ethnicity, we are undereducating everyone. So let me be crystal clear. So my gap that I look at is not between black and white, it's not between Hispanic and white. My gap is between proficiency percentages and 100%. And so I am not pleased with what I see for the student groups that are performing at the best and clearly disappointed in how some of the other students are performing. So you'll see that when we look at race and ethnicity, we are undereducating everyone. But our failure to educate is most severe for black students, followed by Hispanic students. And this is third-grade English Language Arts. And let's see if I can make this thing work. So you will see I'm skipping some of the data. The board has handouts of the... And the superintendent had the handouts of the data that I'm focusing on here, which, as I said, is ELA. So here, we have eighth-grade English Language Arts. The performance is more or less the same as third grade. You'll see the same pattern. Poverty predicting worse outcomes. Girls do better than boys. Whites do better than Hispanics, who do better than blacks in our school district. But this is almost a universal pattern. And we need to see that, and we need to consider the reasons why as we move forward with our strategic plan that is, as I understand, going to have equity in every pillar. So here we go with 10th-grade English Language Arts, where every group except white males who are not on free and reduced lunch dropped some, right? White males not on free and reduced lunch improved just a little bit when compared to the previous, the eighth-grade ELA. And now, for the grand finale. So what do we talk about? We talk about graduation, right? And so here we are. So this is fiscal year 2019. We don't have 2020 yet. So there's startling progress here, right? If you look at this and compare this to 10th-grade English Language Arts, eighth-grade English Language Arts, third-grade English Language Arts, there's startling progress. We went from ELA proficiencies in 10th grade in the 50s to the highest 84% for white students to a 79% to 97% graduation rate for white students. For Hispanic students, we went from the 30s to 75% for 10th-grade ELA to a graduation rate of 78 to 95. And for black students, we went from a 10th-grade English Language Arts proficiency, and this is level three and above that we're calling proficiency. We went from proficiency in 10th grade for black students from 23 to 62% to a graduation rate of 78 to 91%. So what does this tell us, right? I know it means that we are doing outstanding job. We've put in a lot of resources to get kids over that graduation benchmark, right? But it concerns me. It really concerns me that we have not sufficiently taught students to read. But we get them across the graduation mark, right? So I don't know how we go from 30-something percent proficiency in reading to the 70, 80 percentile rate for graduation, right? I'm just saying, we need to look at this. And so, and I think that since we know that reading is fundamental, right? Like, we know this, right? And so I think that we need to ponder this as we consider our strategic plan. What are the skills, talents, and experiences that we want our graduates to have? I know that I want them to be able to read and to comprehend what they read. So we get them across this threshold called graduation. But can they read the way we want them to? I think the 10th-grade ELA data tells us no. We need to look at that. And so I'm going to ask that we each consider what that means so as we have conversations moving forward about our strategic plan, that we don't forget this humongous jump from 10th-grade English Language Arts proficiency to graduation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. The only comment I have is we have the in memoriam. We have, as the public knows, we usually recognize those employees who have passed away. So we have one on our agenda this evening, Henry Pollack. He was an assistant principal at High Vocational Wellington High School, born September 18, 1970. Passed away October 7, 2020. If we could have a moment of silence for Mr. Pollack and his family. Thank you, everyone. The next item on our agenda is our Student Government Report. Palm Beach County Student Council President Santiago Alvarez. You're up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I would like to first start by congratulating Alexandra Ayala on your election for being the first Latina elected to the school board. Thank you. Additionally, I would like to congratulate Ms. Karen Brill on your new role as vice chairperson to the school board and Mr. Frank Barbieri on your reappointment to the chair of the school board. I wish you all the best of luck in your terms. Over the past few weeks, the county council has continued to work towards embracing the changes and making this year as exciting as possible. Student governments across the county have continued to host virtual spirit weeks, awareness days, such as Hispanic Heritage Celebration events and Veterans Day-related events, and planned events to celebrate our student success. Additionally, student leaders have continued to stay active on school-run social media accounts that inform students on everything from school information to election registration and voting information. The senior class executive boards are continuing to plan and organize special events that follow CDC guidelines for the senior class. Palm Beach Central High School, who hosted our second virtual county council meeting with 27 schools in attendance and over 200 students attending. And the meeting was a true success. Once again, on behalf of the entire county executive board, I would like to thank the school board for allowing us to use these chambers to host our meeting. These meetings truly allow for students across the county to share ideas and projects relating to the work we do as student governments. In this meeting, we discussed and voted on multiple resolutions, but the following resolution was passed. This resolution was written by Seminole Ridge High School. It is a resolution to remove the words "sexually suggestive" from the school board policy 5.182 dress code, submitted by Seminole Ridge High School on November 26, 2020. Whereas currently, the school board policy, section 5.182, Article 5, reads, "Clothing that is sexually suggestive or revealing." Examples include, but is not limited to, clothing that exposes midriff, exposes one's undergarments, having plunging necklines, muscle tops, backless clothing, and are constructed of see-through materials. And whereas, the phrase "sexually suggestive" is defined in the Cambridge English Dictionary as "often used to describe something that makes people think about sex." And whereas, including this phrase, "oversexualizes students in an environment where they are trying to receive an education." And whereas, dress code should focus on appropriateness of clothing deemed by certain guidelines, not based on sexual clothing. And whereas, including "sexually suggestive" requires administrators and staff to make a judgment on what they determine to be sexual. And whereas, making a judgment as an adult regarding a minor is an area of concern, putting both the students and administrators in an uncomfortable position. And whereas, generalizing revealing clothing as sexual may harm a student's self-esteem as the school is supposed to be a welcoming environment and free from judgment. And whereas, the school board policy is written for all schools in the district, including elementary, middle, elementary and middle schools, and all students, especially minors, should not be associated with an aspect of the word "sexual." And whereas, other policies, including Miami Dade and Broward, do not include the phrase "sexually suggestive" in their county dress code policies. And whereas, the current Palm Beach County school board policy includes many examples of what would be deemed out of dress code, thereby negating the need for the phrase "sexually suggestive" in determining appropriateness of clothing. Therefore, be it resolved that the Palm Beach County School Board policy be changed to exclude the phrase "sexually suggestive" from Article 5, Section 5.182, in regards to dress code. The student councils of Palm Beach County believe that as a district, this needs to be looked at and changed. I would love to follow up with someone regarding this resolution and express our further concerns. Apart from my county council work, I was informed by the Office of the Chief of Staff at the district that the school board participated in a workshop around equity, mission, and vision, and a strategic plan. This workshop shared a plan with the board around defining the concept of equity prior to embarking on the development of the new strategic plan in January of 2021. As the student representative, I would be very interested to work along with the other school board members in building and creating this vision of racial equity. I have already began reading through the material provided at this workshop and look forward to sharing my thoughts on this topic. As always, I would like to thank the board for your continued efforts to better our education and making our students your first priority. I hope everyone has a safe, happy, and healthy Thanksgiving. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. President. Ms. Brill?
Thank you. And I would like to ask Legal to take a look at the policy and send it back to all of us and see if you can make those changes as recommended by the student government.
Microphone.
Absolutely. I took note, and I will be working with the superintendent and his team on that.
I'd also like to share with the school board, on one late evening, when I was leaving, our school board representative and his team looked very comfortable in your seats, working. It was very... When I walked in the door, I said, "Did I miss a meeting?" And they were handling themselves. So they're doing a very, very good job of conducting themselves in a professional manner with auto-robbers rules of order. So congratulations and great use of our facilities after hours.
Thank you.
Dr. Robinson?
Can I just ask a clarifying point? So is it the phrase "sexually suggestive" that's offensive? Or does it include the descriptors?
So the resolution, at the end, it is, the resolution is just to exclude the phrase "sexually suggestive" from the article.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. As we begin our equity workshops, maybe this is through Mr. Barbieri to the superintendent, how are we going to make sure our student council will actually get information so that they can actually weigh in? Has that already been worked into the process?
I have a suggestion, Mrs. Andrews. If the board members don't have an issue with it, we can ask Mr. Alvarez to come to the workshop and participate with us. I mean, he is a student representative to us. Mr. Alvarez, if you would like to do that, I don't see any objection from the board members. Mr. Superintendent, you have an issue with that?
My only issue would be whether or not he has classes.
Okay.
So I'm not going to excuse him for school to come to a workshop.
Well, Mr. Barbieri, just as a follow-up.
Mrs. Andrews?
We do want him to have meaningful input. And so I would like to make sure that he's aware of what we're talking about as it relates because we're talking about our students. We're talking about adults too, but we're really talking about what we do for our students. So I really want to make sure that he gets this information that we're actually talking about, that he gets a chance to talk to the consultant. That's why I wondered, how is he related to what we're doing so that he can have a meaningful input?
I'll answer that. So the chief of staff office has already worked with the team. And so we will continue the process that he's got all the information, all the information that you received. He and his team have received that. that you received, he and his team have received that, and so the chief of staff is committed to continue that relationship.
Okay.
And Mr. Alvarez, if you can get excused from a class when we're having that workshop by your teacher or principal, you're welcome to join us.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brill?
Thank you. And just further into what Mrs. Andrews was discussing, I did watch the webinar, and it was very, it was very clear that it's very important that we get stakeholders, get students involved, get parents involved. So I know we're going to make a deeper dive into making sure the community is a part, because it's the people impacted, once we sit down to start taking that dive, that we need to hear from. So thank you.
Dr. Robinson?
So as I said at the previous meeting, just to follow up on Mrs. Brill's point, all the equity work will tell you it is the people that are most negatively impacted by your current policies and practices that you must make sure you hear from. And so while I really look forward to the input from Mr. Alvarez, I also want to make sure that we are reaching out to the young people who are opinion leaders on their campus but may not be manifesting teacher-pleasing behavior.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Robinson. All right. If there's no more discussion, Mr. Alvarez? All right. The next item on the agenda is the District Diversity and Equity Committee, President Charlene Postal. Charmaine Postal.
Good evening, Board Chair, Dr. Fanoi, board members, and everyone in their respective places. On behalf of the DDEC, congratulations to all principals acknowledged this evening. I can't help but say, "Go Pandas," because I'm a proud panda. I'm a pointy Hannah. Okay, I'll stop. Also, welcome, Board Member Alexandra Ayala. Welcome back, Ms. Gwen, Chair, Mr. Barbieri, and congrats to the vice chair position, Ms. Brill. The DDEC met on October 22, 2020 via Zoom. Last month, the committee reported before you about the lack of funding for the Racial Equity Institute. An update for that, for the record, funding was secured since the last report. Thank you, Ms. Millen. The committee received presentations on equity teams and equity liaisons by manager of Equity and Access, Keisha Starks, that will be formed throughout the district. We look forward to hearing more about this program. We do know that there are two schools involved, and because it has not been made publicly known, we'll keep those schools on the hush. In addition, Ms. Starks shared the culturally responsive teaching course and culturally responsive leadership courses. Both courses are offered to instructional staff and leaders. You can contact Ms. Carleen Millen for more information about those respectively. Our next DDEC meeting is November 19 at 9:00 a.m. in Thurber A&amp;B. DDEC do express great concerns regarding the governor's failure to extend the orders to allow virtual meetings. So we have had several members that will not attend the future meetings, including tomorrow's meeting, due to the increase of COVID cases. So whatever you can do, board members, we have sent some letters to our governor, but whatever you can do to help continue the work of the DDEC, ensure that all voices are at the table would be greatly appreciated. Happy Thanksgiving to all. Be well. And the last thing that I would like to add is the equity worksheet workshop that you all had on that Tuesday. We would like to have more meaningful conversations from the DDEC. We did miss that first meeting, and I'll take accountability for that, but we would like to attend the workshop and participate in that conversation up in forefront. Have a great Thanksgiving, and thank you all.
Thank you. Same to you. We have elected officials and delegates. We have two that are present, and the other ones are recorded. President Katz from Classroom Teachers Association and President Gorillos from the Education Foundation.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I wanted to congratulate the new and newly-elected officials, both reelected and first time. Thank you very much for your service, and I look forward to working with you. To get to the point, and I spoke and reached out to as many of you as possible, I'm here to try to implore you to break the logjam that is the current salary negotiations with CTA. It's clear, I think, to both sides on negotiations team that we are rapidly approaching a potential impasse situation that no one wants to go down, because that obviously is not desirable to anyone. I would urge you to look at the content I've sent you, to watch the recorded video from the last session that took place on Friday, because I think it gives a fair and honest perspective from both sides, and to simply do the right thing. I think right now, the issue that our side has, and I think that the CTA has with the district, is that it is difficult to do the right thing now, because the right thing oftentimes is not what you want to do. We are in a weird situation in the world, and it is comfortable not to make tough decisions that you don't want to make but might be right. I can talk from firsthand experience as a CTA president that if I took the position that when teachers didn't want to do something, we would have rejected it and refused to do it, you would not have had a distance learning MOU in August. It was more comprehensive than any distance learning MOU in the state of Florida. You would not have had a Phase 2 MOU that incorporated simultaneous teaching, which you know nobody likes. You would not have recorded lessons if not for us doing things that we did not want to do, but we acknowledged should be done for the greater good, should be done for the students, should be done for the district. And right now, you are faced with the decision to allocate some funds, which were already intended to be used for raises prior to COVID, to give a nominal raise to teachers, specifically the veterans, who are marginalized by the state legislation that is giving 15% and 16% raises to people that are not even hired yet, but is giving a 1.7% raise to teachers who have worked for you for 30 or 40 years. The basic gist of the request, and again, the video explains everything and shows both sides, is the state has provided 1.7% for veteran teachers. We are asking for a guaranteed 1.8% extra to bring them up to 3.5%. And that 1.8% does not apply to the entire bargaining unit, because almost 5,000 teachers are covered by the state money. They would be excluded. So we're asking for 1.8% for a fraction of the bargaining unit, the veteran teachers who are marginalized by that state law. You can pay for that raise, the 1.8%, out of less money than attrition savings from employee turnover in the bargaining unit saves you from last year to this year. That is a fact. Now, again, going back to my original point, I'm not asking you to like this, I'm not asking you to want this, I'm not asking for you to be comfortable with this, but if you can acknowledge that, the facts are the facts, the money is available, and the expenditure of these funds, while you might not want to do it, they will not lead to financial harm for the district. They will not collapse the safety and financial security of the district. What they will do is take your words, your praise of teachers, all of you, superintendents, school board members, staff, your praise is great, but praise does not pay the bills. Praise does not make people feel appreciated in the face of action that might contradict that praise. So what we're trying to do, again, is avoid impasse, which seems likely, by your own team's admission at the last negotiation session, and get a 1.8% raise for a fraction of the teachers. That is equivalent to like a 1.2% raise for the entire bargaining unit. It is a deal. You will save $4 million in attrition savings, because we're not even asking you to spend all of it. So again, I just, I think that right now, it is easy to do the easy thing, but the easy thing is not the right thing. It is always the right time to do the right thing, and these teachers are looking to you to make sure that they don't have to go to impasse, and they don't have to spend months and months waiting for a raise that they could have gotten back in August if things had been agreed to at that time. So again, I thank you for your time. Please watch the one-hour session that was recorded last Friday. It will educate you. Thank you.
Thank you, President Katz. President Gorillos?
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Fanoi. Members of the school board, and I, too, want to add my congratulations to those who have been expressed earlier, on all of you for stepping up to serve. membriala, it's nice to have you on board. I look forward to working with you as we move into the future. Chairman Barbieri, Vice Chairman Brill, who, by the way, serves on the Education Foundation Board, it's nice to have you on board and congratulations in your elected roles tonight. Dr. Fanoi, you said something earlier that I found interesting, that these are opportunities to share our story with the public. Most people associate the Education Foundation with, you know, awarding grants and Red Apple Supplies. That's actually the fruit of what we do. What we actually do is connect. We connect the wider community to the world of education, and tonight I want to share with you some of those connections. I would like to say, before I jump into that, what an honor it is, Chairman Barbieri and Dr. Fanoi, to work with your team. There's a group of people who sit back here who don't get a lot of love in the public. And, you know, starting with the Education Network, and Claudia Shea, and Jordan, Andrew, Kate, and Julie, and the whole team at Communication and the Education Network, who constantly help us get our story out. Chief Kitziro and the entire security system here. Mike Burke and Heather Knuston on the finance side, who has the ungodly work of coming up with the budget every year. Wanda Paul, Keith Oswald, and someone I've come to just love over the last couple of months of a project we're working on, Mark Howard and Dr. Adam Miller. I don't think you realize how hard these people work behind the scenes. We connect the public to them. Dr. Robinson, you correctly pointed out the importance of reading. This is Literacy Month, and your Education Foundation has ramped up a literacy program for which we're raising funds, and here's some of those connections. The Jewish Federation of Palm Beach County's Volunteer Center has donated 2,500 books, some going to Royal Palm School, the other to a school to be named later. Roots and Wings and Ted Hoskinson, one of our collaborative partners, has donated 7,000 books to Red Apple Supply. Every teacher who comes will be getting a book bundle of 25 books. Most of you are aware, a second program we've been working on, helping the Digital Inclusion Campaign, that really Mark Howard and Dr. Adam Miller have spearheaded. Some of the community partners who have stepped up, the Stiles Nicholson Foundation for $100,000, the Walton Family for $100,000, the Pew Fund for $100,000. I can happily announce, it's public now, that the Frederick Deluca Foundation is in for $100,000. The Miami Dolphins are in for $100,000. Florida Crystals, Lost Tree Village, all of these community partners connecting to the world of education. And so Chairman Barbieri, that's really what we do. Yeah, we award grants, yes, we run Red Apple Supply, but ultimately, we bring these amazing business partners, and we just connect them to these people who do incredible work day in and day out. The final little announcement I can finally share, I was bursting last month but was sworn to secrecy. One of our great community partners is Bank of America. They are as devoted to public education as anyone we know. Bank of America awards annually a Neighborhood Builder Grant. They select a nonprofit in our community. They award them a two-year grant of $100,000, as well as special leadership training for two leaders within the organization. I can happily tell you that this year, the Education Foundation was named as the Neighborhood Builder, and we want to thank Bank of America for the trust they're giving us. We will be using their grant to continue our transformation of Red Apple Supply. It's Red Apple Supply online and on the move. As the coronavirus continues to affect us, almost all of our Red Apple Supplies are being delivered now. Teachers are able to get online and place their order, and we're doing everything with contactless delivery. So your Education Foundation continues to transition with the help of these amazing community partners. Thank you to all of you who make the work magic, and thank you to our community partners. We are your Education Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for everything you do for us. Board members, we have one, two, three, four, five, six recorded messages. So with the IT department plays those six from the elected officials and delegates who are on our list.
Good evening, school board members and staff. This is Laura Feldman. I am talking to you as President of Palm Beach County Council of PTAs, PTSAs. So I want to begin my statement tonight with letting you know that Florida PTA has sent a letter to the governor and also to the Florida Board of Education, and I'm going to read parts of this letter to everyone. The Florida Parent Teacher Association appreciates and supports how the Florida Department of Education Emergency Order 2020-06 made possible locally-developed innovative learning models for successful, safe openings of schools in all our districts. And it goes on to say, "While innovative models and safety protocols continue to be adjusted by superintendents, school boards, and local health officials, Florida PTA asks to continue the emergency order to the spring semester with consideration of the following. Parental choice should not be restricted, nor schools financially penalized, for parents who wish to continue virtual or hybrid virtual instruction. Schools should continue to be held harmless from any budget cuts this school year due to the fluctuation of enrollment numbers and type of instruction. The state should review the number of required assessments and limit them only to those required for graduation or promotion, and come into complete compliance with the minimum requirements of the federal Every Student Succeeds Act of the Elementary and Student Education statutes. Also, assessments should be helpful to meeting the needs of our students and families and regard it appropriately in the current environment. While state-required assessments are scheduled for 2021, use of those results should hold students, teachers, schools, and school districts harmless from any penalty or reclassification. The waivers granted in 2020 should be continued for the rest of the 2020 to 2021 school year. Any required assessment results should enable districts to determine the level of need and resources, funding and instructional time to catch all up to 2019 levels and beyond over the next one to two years. The state should give districts flexibility in the use of state, federal, and local dollars to provide for increased instructional time to state standards, time, for example, the length of the school day, so that the students can bring any deficient skills or knowledge to state standards and close the achievement gap. Thank you. We also ask for the increased transparency and empower stakeholders through timely reporting. Thank you very much."
Good evening to school board members and superintendent Dr. Fanoi. I am Joaquin Almasan, and my community outreach role for our labor union called the International Association of Machinists and Air Space Workers, or locally known as I Am Sugar, I am pleased to be here with you today to celebrate history and making. I'm a constituent of school board member Andrews that includes the Glades region, and I am here to show support from our Glades community, our Hispanic community, and our union community. We are proud of newly-elected school board member Ayala, as she is the first female elected into the 10th largest school district in the nation. This is history. As someone who grew up in the Glades and my children attended the schools, the fair and landslide election of Ms. Ayala is changing the narrative of an underrepresented ethnic group by beginning to receive representation. She gives many of us here hope to work in a climate of respect and fairness to what is important to our educators and students. Thank you. Joaquin Almasan.
Delegation, Dr. Joaquin Garcia, Chair of the Hispanic Education Coalition of Palm Beach County. Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm Dr. Joaquin Garcia, Chairman of the Hispanic Education Coalition of Palm Beach County. Today is a great day of celebration. The Hispanic community of this district will be represented in the school board by one of our own, new board member Alexandra Ayala. Smart, professional, dedicated, and passionate. She has the support of the Hispanic community. She brings to the board the perspective of multiple Hispanics that for many years have felt abandoned and without a voice. She also provides a bridge to a new generation and has a unique understanding of how education must adapt to meet the need of changing environment, changing economic factors, and changing demographics. The Hispanic community thanks all board members who have provided unwavering support to the Hispanic community in the past. Particular appreciation goes to Mrs. Marsha Andrews, who has served as our liaison to the board and has been an advocate for all students, and to Mr. Barbieri, who has been attentive to the needs of the Hispanic community and committed to equity. We hope that all board members continue this work and partner with Mrs. Ayala in solving the many issues that challenge our community. The board will now have a partner in the fight for equity and representation of all children without leaving the stories and the needs of Hispanic students and the Hispanic community behind. I also want to extend my congratulations to reelected board members Barbara McQueen and Chairman Barbieri. You have our appreciation and support in the difficult work you do. The Hispanic Education Coalition wishes to extend a hand of partnership to all board members in continuing the sacred work of helping all students reach their full potential and become a productive member of this great community. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Dr. Carlos Diaz, Chair-elect of the Hispanic Education Coalition, and Professor Emeritus at Florida Atlantic University. First, I want to say that I am sorry I cannot attend today's meeting in person, so I'm leaving my voicemail. I want to say individually and on behalf of the Hispanic Education Coalition, I would like to congratulate Alexandria Ayala as the first elected Latina member of the Palm Beach County School Board. We are very proud of you, and we look forward to working with you and all the members of the school board to continue to improve education for all the students in the school district of Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jacqueline Talloway, and I am speaking on behalf of the Coalition for Black Student Achievement. The impact of COVID-19 on the African-American community has been considerable, but its adverse impact on the education of black children has been devastating. impact on the education of black children has been devastating. It is undeniable that even before COVID-19, black children suffered academically as a result of an inadequate and inequitable education in this district. The impact of substandard instruction, inattentiveness to their emotional needs, and unfortunately, systemic racism has resulted in the chronic low academic achievement and underachievement by far too many of our black students for far too many decades, and with far too few effective measures to reverse this, reverse this trend. As an organization, the Coalition will continue to focus our attention on the intersectionality of systemic racism and the quality of education that black students receive in Palm Beach County. You may be really appealing to Coalition's unrelenting focus on systemic racism in this district, but it does exist in spite of the work of many well-meaning districts and school staff. Therefore, it is necessary for us to do as long as racism diminishes the educational progress and emotional well-being of black students, as long as it affects how our black children feel about schools, and as long as black parents feel disparaged and have little trust that the school district cares about what happens to their children and their advocacy for their children. It is within your power and your obligation to confront the insidiousness of systemic racism in the district and how it impacts the education and lives of children. It is within your power and obligation to fearlessly confront it at all levels in this district. It is the obligation of the district leadership to create a concrete roadmap to address this issue and to put in place clear lines of accountability. The Coalition sincerely credits this district for the positive steps it has already taken and is committed to continuing to take in the future. However, the Coalition will continue to vigorously fight for black students in all aspects of their education. Thank you very much.
Distinguished members of the board, good day to you. My name is Jennifer Jones. I am the Public Relations Director with the Volunteer Association and Fund of Florida, a nonprofit organization working right here in Palm Beach County. I want to thank Dr. Robinson for the tireless work he's done in our community in working with us to bring our issues to the forefront. The reason why we want to address the board is to remind you how important it is to keep your Haitian children and the Haitian children's families in the forefront of your mind during this pandemic. We are experiencing a lot of strife in our community, and we definitely need to make sure that the school board districts remember that your Haitian population is a community that is in crisis and that needs to be addressed. The Haitian population is the largest immigrant population in Palm Beach County, and we need a Haitian dual-language program in our schools. And we understand that the pandemic has made it difficult to make this thing happen, but it is not impossible, and we count on you, school board districts, to make sure that our children are not left behind. It is important also for us as our community that we see more Haitian representation in your staff. And we're not talking about just the support staff with the custodial and the bus attendants, but in teachers, in guidance counselors, in assistant principals, and in principals in Palm Beach County. Our children rely on that representation, and the parents are trusting us as their leaders to make sure that their children are in an environment where they can grow and they can excel. And we know that having more Haitian representation will do that. We want to make sure that our Haitian families need the support that they need during the time, including tutoring, including the support at home with computers and laptops, but also making sure that the children are on track, because it is sometimes difficult in the Haitian household to make sure that everything that is conveyed virtually is retained by the child. So this just highlights the importance of having more Haitian on staff and of having a Haitian dual-language program in Palm Beach County. And so we come before you as a community leader, as an organization, to remind you of the importance of caring for our children and our Haitian families and to promote this Haitian dual-language program, as well as more Haitian representation in your staff, especially in administration. Thank you.
Board members, we have no agenda topics, speakers. So moves us to the consent agenda. Does any board member wish to pull anything from consent? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Dr. Robinson, seconded by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. There is no unfinished business. That takes us to new business. Mr. Superintendent, AD one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Under new business AD one, authorization to request a formal Attorney General opinion regarding board and district advisory committee meetings. I recommend the board authorize its general counsel to request a formal Attorney General's opinion on the question of whether the school board may adopt, under its home rule authority for a school purpose, policies allowing Sunshine Meetings for board and district advisory committees and other Sunshine Committees where a CORM is required to be physically present, to be conducted by means of communications, communications media technology during a public health emergency, including a pandemic, and authorize the board chair, superintendent, and general counsel to sign the related documents.
Motion by?
Motion.
Ms. Ayala, seconded by Dr. Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. COM one, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I recommend the board proclaim November nine through thirteenth, 2020 as Holocaust Education Week.
Motion by Ms. Brill, seconded by Mrs. Andrews. Ms. Brill?
Thank you, and this is very timely. So I am going to read this proclamation as I typically do. Whereas, sorry, my eyes have to focus. Whereas, the Florida Department of Education has designated the second week of November as Holocaust Education Week. Holocaust Education Week has been set aside by the State of Florida and the School District of Palm Beach County to remember the victims of the Holocaust, as well as to reflect on the need for respect for all peoples. And whereas, the Holocaust was the state-sponsored systemic persecution and annihilation of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945. Six million Jews were murdered. Roma, people with disabilities, and Poles were also targeted for destruction or decimation for racial, ethnic, or national reasons, and millions more, including homosexuals. Jehovah's Witnesses, Soviet prisoners of war, and political dissidents also suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas, the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments. And whereas, the School District of Palm Beach County should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. And whereas, the School District of Palm Beach County should actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom in a just society. And whereas, November nine, 2020, through November ten, 2020, marks the eighty-second anniversary of Kristallnacht, the Night of Broken Glass. And whereas, during Kristallnacht, hundreds of synagogues in Germany and Austria were burned and destroyed, businesses and homes were ransacked, scores of innocent Jews were killed, and thousands of others were arrested and sent to concentration camps. And whereas, Kristallnacht serves as a prelude to the Holocaust and to systemic mass murder on a scale never before seen in the human history. And whereas, the reign of Nazi government marks one of the darkest periods in civilized history. And whereas, the commemoration of this unprecedented event reminds us all of our solemn duty to keep alive the memory of the millions who perished during the Holocaust, and to ensure through education and mutual respect that the acts of genocide shall never again occur. Now wherefore be it resolved that the superintendent and school board of Palm Beach County do hereby proclaim the week of Monday, November nine, 2020, through Friday, November thirteen, 2020, as Holocaust Education Week in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in honor of the survivors, as well as the rescuers and liberators, and further proclaim that we should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. Done the seventeenth day of November, 2020, in West Palm Beach, Florida. Thank you.
Board members, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. COM two, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board proclaim November twenty twenty as Homeless Child and Youth Awareness Month.
Motion made by Mrs. Andrews, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield. Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. Proclamation, Homeless Child and Youth Awareness Month, November twenty twenty. Whereas, responding to the increasing number of homeless families with children, President Ronald Reagan in 1987 signed into law the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act, guaranteeing equal access to a free, appropriate public education to children and youth experiencing homelessness. And whereas, the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act requires every school district to appoint a local liaison for homeless education to ensure proper identification, immediate enrollment, and linkages to other educational and community services for which students experiencing homelessness are eligible. And whereas, every school district in the state has designated local homeless education liaison who is responsible for ensuring the homeless students' educational rights are observed. And whereas, four thousand five hundred and forty-two homeless children and youth were identified within the School District of Palm Beach County during the 2019-2020 school year. And whereas, the community, we need to do everything we can to help stabilize and support families in economic distress. And that includes ensuring that homeless children and youth have equal access to quality education and all of the support we can provide. And whereas, the McKinney-Vento Program of the Department of Safe Schools, School District of Palm Beach County works to remove barriers often encountered by students experiencing homelessness and enrolling, attending, and succeeding in school while increasing awareness of the issues facing homeless children and youth. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the superintendent and the school board of Palm Beach County do hereby proclaim November twenty twenty as Homeless Child and Youth Awareness Month. Done the seventeenth day of November, 2020, in West Palm Beach, Florida. Frank A. Barbieri, Junior Esquire Board Chair, Dr. Donald E. Fanoi, the Second Superintendent.
Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you. I just want to mention, as this proclamation stated, four thousand five hundred and forty-two homeless students. Those numbers are from last year, and last year compared to this year is a totally different world. The children are experiencing homelessness at higher levels than ever before, and we're having a harder time finding them and getting our hands on them to keep them in school and give them services. So I hope that as we go forward with our planning for this year, that we consider putting additional funds towards this program. I don't, I know that they're really struggling to keep up with the demand, and so I think our numbers are going to be very, very high this year. So I just wanted to mention that as we put forward this proclamation, the need is greater than ever before. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Whitfield. Any other discussion? Mrs. Andrews?
And I just want to say thank you for the team that truly worked with our homeless students, their compassion, their passion, working with these students and finding them the necessary services for their success. We have the teams all across Palm Beach County. Take a moment to reach out to them and tell them thank you. They're into all of the different neighborhoods, doing all this hard work so that we can save all children, those that are homeless, who are in need. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in, Dr. Robinson?
Sorry, I, I just feel the need to say this. So this, we do need to do this work, and we do need to support homeless children and hungry children and all. But it just keeps bouncing in my head. We are a big influential institution, right? At some point, I think that we need to use our voice to leverage this community to look at the root causes, because there are reasons that children are hungry. There are reasons that children and families are homeless, right? And so while we need to try to address the need in front of us, I think that we need to, to push for a much larger discussion. I know the county commission has had, you know, done work on homelessness, but we need to, to partner with whoever, everybody, to get to the root causes and stop just, you know, giving the Tylenol to the guy with the brain tumor. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. P two, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I recommend the board approve the personal addendum as submitted.
Motion by Mrs. Brill, seconded by Ms. Ayala. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. That takes us to board discussion items. The BD one, Mrs. Whitfield, FSBA governance.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to bring this back up. It's something we talked about, I think, back in January, about having FSBA come in and talk about our governance as a board and how we decide that. I think, for me, this is an important discussion because, you know, there's really not much that's more important to me than, than how well this school district runs. I think that we are, I think that we really need to have hard discussions with each other and, and, you know, discuss things about how we choose chair and vice chair and, you know, what those responsibilities entail. I think this is, you know, something that, that I think is important going forward for us. So I wanted to ask my fellow board members if we could have this discussion at our upcoming retreat. I did speak to Andrea Messina, and she would be able to send a representative. She couldn't come herself, so I know our staff has had a chance to have that conversation. But really, I think it would be good for all of us, especially with having a new board member. And, you know, for my own educational purposes, I would really like to understand better the ways that we can be the most effective governing board that we can be. So I just wanted to ask if you all would be okay with adding that to the upcoming retreat.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes, Mrs. Whitfield, I think it's more than needed. And the last time we actually had our training with the Florida School Board, we had not had a break. Now that we have a new board member, we need to have our retraining so that we can be a master board again. I mean, we were able to utilize the training because all of us that are in here now were a part of that training, but now that we have a new board member, we need to take it a step further, not just with the meeting that we'll have at the retreat, but we need to now talk to the Florida School Boards Association so that we can get training for our new board member. So it goes to another level.
Go ahead, Ms. Brill.
Thank you, and I think it's a great idea. The only concern I have is adding it to that retreat. I don't know if we should have a separate one. I don't know if it's, I don't want to, I don't know how long it's going to take for us to do the work that we already have scheduled. So I'm open to doing a second retreat if that works better. I'll leave that to the superintendent and staff. I just don't want us to run short on time on either discussion because both are very critical.
Mrs. McQuinn?
I don't know if the retreat has been timed out yet, but I do know that Mrs. Whitfield has been trying to have this discussion for a while. I'd like to see it as part of our retreat, even if we just get started on it. Again, I don't know if, has everything been timed out yet?
When I talked to Mr. Tierney today, he indicated that there was room on the, at the retreat to?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, if you give me, I can respond to that. We have built three hours for our equity conversation, and we can build one more hour to start this conversation around board governance. And we have been in contact with FSBA, and we do have that alternate that'll be willing to come. So it's at the pleasure of So it's at the pleasure of the board.
To follow up then, I think it's important because this is something that she's expressed that she feels strongly about. And I think there are a few things I feel strongly about too, like how long we speak. So I think we need to review a few rules just about how we handle, you know, protocols and that kind of thing. So thank you. If we can make that happen, I'd like to.
Does everybody agree with Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. I'm in agreement. I don't know, what are the planned hours for the retreat, though? Matt?
The number of hours of the, we don't have the times as of yet. But we know it was four hours with this particular edition. So we're still working with the board on what works for all of your schedules.
So as I recall, those times that we had the trainings with FSBA, it was like a half a day. That's, is my recollection off? It was at least, I'm gonna say three hours, right? Now, so I don't really know what's planned, and I don't want to like just dip our collective toe in the water and then walk away. I would be willing to extend the hours that we are in the retreat in order to accomplish that. Because I think it's kind of foundational for our reset.
When we did the master board training the last time, I think it was at least four hours. It was like from nine in the morning till one in the afternoon where they came down and we did. So, I mean, I didn't think that Mrs. Whitfield was talking about doing the master board training at the retreat, but just discussing governance in general. Ms. Bril?
Well, I agree with Dr. Robinson, though. If we can extend the hours for the retreat, you know, and just make it a little, a longer day. Because I think that Mrs. Whitfield's discussion is very important. I know that you have brought it up, and I don't want it to be pushed back. But at the same time, I want to make sure we have adequate time. And Dr. Robinson's correct. When we have had FSBA come down, it's been several hours. So, you know, even if we started in the morning, broke for lunch, and came back and worked in the afternoon, I'm fine with that. I'll, you know, I'm happy to block my day. I'm sure everybody else is. And that way, we can really dive deep.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would turn over to Mr. Tierney, who's organizing this, to have a conversation with the board around next steps.
This was per Ms. Whitfield's request on governance. It wasn't the whole four-hour master board training. That being said, we could try to extend it. But my understanding is there was at least one board member who had a conflict in the afternoon, which also led to that compression. So we'll reach out again to board, the board secretaries, to see if everyone's available, and if they are, then we'll look to extend it.
And maybe, and if the board is not available, I think I heard another board member mention, maybe we can schedule another time specifically for board, for master board training, I think is the term you used. So I think we'll start with Mr. Tierney, working with you guys, and see if we can extend the existing meeting on the fourth.
Ms. McQuinn?
I'm so sorry. Thank you, Mr. Tierney. I am the board member who had the conflict. Okay. And I didn't thank Maria for all help. She's kept me pretty solid for the last four years, and things are crumbling a little bit in the last month or so. Anyway, all right, my calendar's out of control. I will make mine work. I'll just make it happen, whatever we need to do.
All right, any further discussion? All right. Mr. Tierney, you got your work cut out for you. BD two, Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So there are rumors that, I just want to say this. He who shall not be named in Tallahassee is considering pushing all students to return to brick-and-mortar schools in January. And that's extremely troubling to me as we watch the COVID numbers spike and after listening to parent choice as the mantra for forced reopening of our schools in the fall. So I'm very concerned. And I know that we have the Thanksgiving, and then after the winter holidays, is going to be more cases. So it's going to get worse before it gets better, most likely. And so the concept of pushing students back into schools where they're unable to maintain social distancing just simply because we don't have enough space to do so is frightening. So at this point, I'm not talking about what we should decide to do. I'm not, I'm not talking about whether we should close schools. I'm not talking about whether schools should be opening. What I'm saying is, it should be our decision. And so what I'm asking, and we just authorized staff to request attorney general opinion about sunshine meetings under, you know, local control kind of scenario. So I'm asking that this board direct the superintendent to lay the foundation for a call to action consistent with our policy 2.591, should that become necessary. Because things are going to move fast. Hopefully, they won't move rapidly in the direction I'm afraid of. But if it does, I think that we need to call upon everyone, you know, PTA, CTA, the, you know, every acronym on earth, and our parents and students, right, to add their voices to say, in Palm Beach County, we should decide what happens in Palm Beach County schools. And so that's the purpose of my discussion item, to request laying the foundation for a call to action should it become necessary.
Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you. I, this is something that's been a real big concern for me as well when I was reading over our legislative priorities. It's included in there as something that we said, but to me, it's not big enough, and it's not loud enough. I really do think that we are going to get to a place where families are not going to send their children back to us if we don't have this as an option. And we already are struggling with finding these children, keeping these children in school. We're 7,000 kids down. I think that number's going to go up. And then I'm very concerned about our teachers who are currently working remotely successfully and are not going to be able to do that going forward. So I think, I think we do need to put together a collective voice from the school district, letting everybody know that this is something that we really need for our families here, that we need for our community. We have to be able to continue to offer this distance learning option. And if we don't, I'm very concerned for what that means for our schools. So I would be supportive of a call to action.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes, I'm very supportive of the call to action. I was very happy to see Elena Alonso here because everything is driven by the health piece of this. And our teachers right now, our parents, students, they're all concerned because of this rumor that we're going to ask everyone to come back to brick-and-mortar. And we really need to have all of the key stakeholders, especially our health professionals who are leading the way, looking at our numbers every single day. This is why I asked Dr. Alonso to come back to the next board meeting in December so that she can continue to give us an update. But we need to be in charge of our own lives. This is local control right here. This is what the school board is all about. And so we need to begin to build on it. As I look at this building, you know, I'm someone that's at risk because of my age, you know. And when you think about some of the people who work in this building, they can't, all of you can't be piled up here in this building. You're still not back to work fully 100%. You're actually transitioning different days coming into work. And so to even think about, we're going to bring the kids and have them, you know, all back in school, and even our staff is not there. And we're talking about saving lives, and you're looking at the rates of infection, and you haven't seen the deaths yet because, remember, they lag. It's coming, folks. You're going to see it. So we need to direct the superintendent, as well as all of our stakeholders, begin to start talking about the plan of action because it is truly our local responsibility as a school board.
Ms. Bril?
Thank you. And so as you'll recall, my absolute top priority has been local control in terms of our legislative platform. And then I think, I thank Dr. Robinson for bringing this forward. What I'd like to see staff do is prepare for that call to action now. Get, align all of the lists of resources of the people we're going to have to hit. Because as Dr. Robinson said, it's going to be fast-moving. The train is going to leave the station very quickly. But then the other piece, and I think I spoke to Mr. Tierney about it, is we have to do our own call to action, but I think that we need to also leverage with Miami-Dade and Broward. Because our three counties are the ones with the most impact from COVID-19. So I think we structure that. But at the same time, in the background, let's start leveraging that relationship because we have to hit hard. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. And that's exactly what I'm asking for, that we lay the groundwork. We start making the list of all the entities. I think for our representatives on FSBA, you can start reaching out to them to say, listen, you know, maybe it's not impacting you as much as it would impact us, but don't you agree, would you not want local control also, right? Because it seems to me that that phrase, "everybody," should be able to support, right? And so, and I think that maybe now, with, there's a Florida Board of Education meeting tomorrow, so maybe we'll hear something tomorrow. But even if there are not bad decisions being made this week, I think that we could start laying the foundation, the education of our associates and our connections on why this is a bad move if they should try to force us back into brick-and-mortar.
Dr. Fanoi, I understand you've been dealing with the other superintendents in Broward and Miami-Dade on this very issue. Can you bring us up to date on that?
Ms. McQuinn had a comment.
All right, Ms. McQuinn, go ahead.
And I can see that Dr. Fanoi is going to do this. And I hear Dr. Robinson about, everyone would understand that, no. The other districts don't really understand what we, Broward and Dade, have gone through. So I would like, we need to band together because that's what ultimately has, I think, been part of our salvation through this. So I just want, I don't think everybody will be understanding for the greater good. I think that we have to band together.
I would just say, I mean, the board members know, but the public is not aware. So there are certain foundational pieces that have been set. Mr. Bob Runse, Alberto Cavallo, and myself have sent a letter, a joint letter on behalf of our three districts, to the commissioner around the executive order and extending those options for South Florida. So that's been done. On Thursday, we have all 67 superintendents have a meeting with Commissioner Corcoran through FADS to talk about next steps. So I will report back to the board after that meeting. And I think Dr. Robinson said there are state-level board meetings that are happening this week. And so we'll get that information as well. I also would like to say that on your platform, the board has put information around home rule. So that's already part of the legislative platform. But again, I think the foundations of that piece have already been set in terms of the combination of all three South Florida districts.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Superintendent, you can put together for us to start working on the call to actions information that we'll need to get this done?
Yeah, I think what we'll start by doing is making sure the board is fully aware of everything we've done up to this date, and then getting your ideas around potential next steps. So yes, we'll do that.
We just, keep in mind, board members, we are past the seven o'clock point, and we.
Okay, one sentence. So, maybe it's two, I don't know. So, but I think that soon we need to like have a statement that says why, you know, home rule, local control, whatever is important to us. And I realize that with COVID, we are particularly situated. But those same other counties, the very people who would impose this brick-and-mortar on us are the same people who in other circumstances talk about home rule, right? I'm just saying. So like, maybe we pull some of that. But I think that we can start educating our community members and our partners on why this is important to us, but not unleash them, so to speak, unless there's a bad move made. That's my request.
And perhaps, Mr. Superintendent, the Communications Division can somehow get the message out. We're getting lots of emails from parents that are hearing about this and want to know what the plan is from the school board, whether or not we're going to be closing the schools. So we need to get some information out to them that the school board is not in favor of, you know, having everybody come back in, you know, in January. So if we can, if we can get some information out.
So I want to make sure that, and this is more a procedural thing. So I definitely want to get feedback from all the board members. But we're going to need, I guess, the chairman or vice chair to make sure that the language that we create is suitable to the board. Because we only have one meeting, and it sounds like we probably need to get this, well, we need, we definitely need to get this communication out before the next board meeting. So we just need to talk, maybe the chairman and I could talk about those pieces, you know, making sure that you have the board representation on the words that we create.
Dr. Robinson?
I think you need to share it with all of us. Okay.
I agree. It's just making sure that whatever the final piece is.
The final piece.
Yeah, 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 we'll do that.
Mrs. Andrews, we got, remember.
We're going to make it quickly because Broward and Miami-Dade, when they did their plan, it was a little different from us. So I'm happy to know that you're having the conversations with the superintendents from the big, the big South Florida counties. And we know we've got to put it out there. We don't need someone to go into some room in Tallahassee somewhere and make a decision about what's going to happen here in Palm Beach County. And I don't want to wake up one day to find out that the decision has already been made. So Dr. Fanoi, as you're working with those other leaders, if we have to call a special board meeting for us to kind of make, to make a statement, I really, I really want that to happen because I don't want anybody listening at this meeting to think that this is what I want to happen. We are in real serious trouble with our health as well as this pandemic right now. Thank you.
Thank you. The football players, those of you that have turned in cards or want to speak tonight, stand up for me for a minute so I can see how many of you are there that have asked to speak. So board members, if you don't have any concerns about this, I'd like to take those young men first so that they can get home. They have school tomorrow. So would you start coming up one at a time and state your name for the record so I can mark you off the list, and we'll take you all first on the list? Just state your name for us. Watch the clock, please. You have three minutes to address the board.
Hello, my name is Sheridan McDonald. I don't have much to say, but I go to Palm Beach Central. I'm in my junior year. And even though I might have a senior year to play, I feel like I speak for most of us when I say that we need this year like to further our education and go to college. That's really it.
What was your name again? Sorry?
Sheridan McDonald.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Keyshawn Winder. I'm a senior that plays for Palm Beach Central. And this season is very important to all of us. And, but also, this season is important to me because it can determine my future. So please give us another opportunity to play again.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, watch your words there. Down there is a speaker for Palm Beach Central on the other side as well.
I can't hear what you said, Dr. Robinson. I'm sorry. I mean, Dr. Fanoi. I just want to get the students here first.
Hello, my name is Amal Hayson. I'm a sophomore quarterback at Palm Beach Central. And I just wanted to say that we need this season for our futures, not just because of athletics, but also education. High school football is what determines where we are in our future. Because it, it's not all about athletics. I could go to college to be an engineer or a doctor. And in order for me to get there, football helps pay for that. And also to get to the NFL, which is my dream. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other students?
Hi, my name is Ashton Smith. I go to Palm Beach Central. And, I mean, I don't really have much to say about all this. I just, I'd really like a chance to play. This is my senior year. And this could, like everyone else has said, determine our future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to start calling on the list. Yvonne Odom, are you here? Go ahead. State your name for the record, please, and then watch the clock, three minutes.
Okay. Yvonne Odom, I live in Delray Beach, Florida. I'm a retired school teacher. I taught for over 45 years. I'm here because the decision you made that you've already done concerning Principal Latson made me sick to my stomach. Disappointed is an understatement because of the process. You first said no, then after much political pressure, you changed your mind. What changed? And by the way, I do not personally know Principal Latson nor the main parent in this situation. My goal is to publicly state my objection and give just a glimpse of my personal experience on examples of systematic racism actions in this district by relentless parents or uninformed administrators and our school board members, whether it's intentional or unintentional. The results are the same. Missed opportunities all over. In 1968, my very first year as a teacher in this district, a white parent removed her child from my classroom when she discovered I was black. Fast forward 2020, white parent had influenced the principal removed because in part, in my opinion, he was black. It is my belief, and you as a board member, once again, blew an opportunity of education and bowed to a relentless parent's assertion that something was not taught to her satisfaction. that something was not taught to her satisfaction, albeit was the Holocaust. Because if it were really about the Holocaust, we would not be here. A missed opportunity as a concerned parent, she could have educated all of us. How many educators over the years who had to teach African-American history through the back door? How dare they request a report? I have personal knowledge of that. Again, missed opportunity to educate. The state has mandated many things. And by the way, no funds to implement. Again, in my opinion, her intent was not about the Holocaust, which I must say is void in many educators' repertoire as well as African-American history, completely absent by many with no intent to implement. Again, a missed opportunity to educate. This was not about the Holocaust. Know indeed more about an African-American male who had the audacity to say that there may be some who don't see it as a historical fact. Again, missed opportunity to educate. I'm not here to change your mind, but to speak mine. And even tonight, with the reading of that proclamation, I learned something. Given the same circumstances with white on white, black on black, would you have come up with the same conclusion? May I continue?
You need to wrap it up, ma'am.
Wrap it up, okay. Well, I'll skip down. Point by point, you rejected each judge's point that pointed out your own flaws in how you went through this progress, process. I'm sorry. Again, a missed opportunity. What I'm saying finally, superintendent, board, parents, administrators, teachers and students, and the legislators, we can clean this up so that the opportunity is not lost as we embrace a rich history of diversity in this county where we can all be respected and valued. Maybe not in my lifetime, but for the sake of my grandchildren and yours, be fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Giorgio, then Roosevelt Tesono.
Good evening to everybody.
Go ahead, state your name, please.
Roosevelt Tesono.
Go ahead.
I'm one of the parents that is here and representing Palm Beach County football players. From the beginning, I don't know who made the decision in regard to canceling our program. That was my biggest grief and the grief for every parent because what does that mean? It means that all players had no chance of being seen, especially the seniors. Meanwhile, every other school in the county is on TV, Friday night, Saturday night, recruiters. So we felt that our student was meant punished. If he wasn't our student, then it was our school's. So that's why we're here. And we call upon Mr. Keith Oswald. I call him personally. He never returned my calls. I left a message for Valerie Mayares, excuse me for pronouncing her name wrong. She never returned my calls. Only person who called one of our members was Ms. Karen Stretts, or I believe her last name is. Okay? But no explanation when we request why was this decision made and by whom? Oh, we don't know. We don't know. We get the bucket kid around. First of all, we were told that, oh, it was recommended by Dr. Alonso and the case and the numbers. All we wanted was for equal treatment to our school, to our student, especially to the seniors that's, is not going to have no opportunity to get scholarships. That's number one. Secondly, it's equal treatment because we are aware of every other school that had cases. Guess what? They were quarantined, they played the next day. When it come down to Palm Beach Central, we had, we were told we had to be quarantined for almost a month. Per your statement or per your calendar, even online, your guidelines say 10 days. Most students were quarantined for over 16, 14 days. Now it's going on to third week. But here's, here's what make it worse, okay? We were told that, oh, if you are allowed to return after Thanksgiving, so that's going to make a month of quarantine, not allowed to practice, but yet they want us to come back, get in the playoff, and play. Again, negative disadvantage. So is this not personal? There is some issues. I don't care. I'm not here for that. I'm here for them. You guys talk about loving the children, educating these children, but somehow you're missing this group here, okay? Why, are they not part of the Society of Palm Beach? Excuse me, I just need a little additional moment, okay? We are here because we want fair treatment. If we did our quarantine period, it's over. Test negative, immediately, we should be back on the field and we should be allowed to make every game that we miss so that we have equal playing time, just like everybody else, and be ready for whatever it is. You guys cannot make your decision unbiased or false information or personal issues with superintendent, teachers, or coaches. That is not our problem. The kids is who you should be taking about. And, and I don't think this decision was made just, it wasn't made equally fair, okay? So we are here demanding that we get a chance to play every single game that we miss and provide an extra time to get prepared so that we could face our next opponent. Thank you.
Thank you. Lanya, I'm sorry, go ahead. Mr. Giorgio, then Lanya Harris, please come up to the podium. Lanya Harris?
Hi, I'm Richard Giorgio. I want to talk this evening about the controversy that has been swirling around the election of school board District Two member Alexandria Ayala and the fact that Mrs. Ayala no longer lives in the residence area she ran for and was elected to represent. Those of you on the board and who are recent candidates know that on June 12th of this year was the last date for candidates to qualify to run for office, including to run for school board. And Mrs. Ayala properly qualified to run for this seat. But barely two weeks after qualifying, she and her partner purchased a $515,000 home together in Delray Beach in District Number Four. No one required her to do that. She could have bought a home in District Two, where she was running to be elected, but she bought a home in District Four, halfway across Palm Beach County. To cover up what she was doing, Mrs. Ayala purchased the home in her mother's maiden name of Montalvo. When I looked at Mrs. Ayala's personnel file for Palm Beach County, where she is employed, her records say her name is Alexandria Marie Ayala. When she filed to run for election, she filed as Alexandria Ayala. Everyone who saw the election saw that she had signs all over the place that said that and nothing said anything about Montalvo. It was a deliberate attempt to deceive voters. Florida statutes say that every member of the school district, school board shall be a resident of the district's school board residence area from which he or she is elected and shall maintain said residency throughout his or her term of office. The mortgage agreement Mrs. Ayala signed says, "The borrower shall occupy, establish, and use the property as the borrower's principal residence within 60 days of execution of this document and shall continue to occupy the property as the borrower's principal residence for at least one year after the date of occupancy." You can't have two primary residences, one in Delray Beach and one here. She no longer meets the residency requirement for this seat. I am calling on this evening for Mrs. Ayala to put an end to this charade and to step down and resign your position. If you are not willing to do that, I want to call on this board to consider asking the governor to intervene and investigate this matter. I did see that Mrs. Ayala sent the board a email.
Mr. Giorgio, you're going to have to wrap it up.
I'll wrap it right up. Sent you an email earlier today saying she addressed this issue. However, that's not the case. Removing your name from the deed does not remove you from the obligation under the note. Thank you.
Lanya Harris and Steve Moss.
Good evening. My name is Lanya Harris. I'm on, I'm here on behalf of Palm Beach Central. My grandson plays football for Palm Beach Central. I'm kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Roosevelt said earlier. I'm here in hoping that the kids can make up their gains and they can get back to practice as soon as possible. And Ms. Andrews, I thank you for what you told the kids. I'm sure they received it. And we're going to be holding you to that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moss?
Good evening. My name is Steve Moss. I'm a Palm Beach County resident for the last 25 years. My son Ben is a junior at Palm Beach County, at Palm Beach Central, and he plays on the varsity football team. Tuesday, November 3rd, we found out that there was someone testing positive for COVID and our practice was canceled. Shortly after that, we were told our game on November 7th versus Atlantic was canceled. And it was later in the week, we were told that our game November 14th versus Park Vista was canceled. Just recently, we found out that our game for this Friday, November 20th versus Wellington, will be canceled as well. So as a concerned parent, I wanted to know why they would cancel the entire season. No other school had their entire season canceled. So we started to ask some questions to see what the proper protocols were and what we could find out. I reached out to a few people to see what we could find out. Valerie Mayares, who's the director of athletics, she never responded to my calls. I then called also Keith Oswald, who's the superintendent. He'd never responded to my calls. However, he forwarded my concerns to Principal Edgcombe at Palm Beach Central. Principal Edgcombe had already spoken to me. He called me and told me that they do want to play our games at Palm Beach Central. So for me, Mr. Oswald just chose not to answer my questions. I then contacted also Karen Wetzel. She is the central superintendent. She called me back later that day and told me that the decision was not hers. And she wasn't sure who made that decision. But she was going to email a Mr. Bogus, who's an assistant superintendent, to ask him if he could find out what was going on. She asked for my email so she would copy me on her question so they would get back to me. She never emailed me and never got back to me on that. Today, around 2:45, a Ms. Dorlene called me who said she also works alongside Karen Wetzel. Because Karen was in meetings and was unable to contact me, she wanted to make sure that someone got back to me and let me know that the decision to cancel the season came from the recommendation from Dr. Alina Alonso, who is here today or was the director of Florida Health. Strange because the day before I spoke to Dr. Alonso, actually, I ended up speaking to her twice that day, she let me know that she did not make any such decision. And she, that was not her recommendation about canceling the season. She did let me know that when she spoke to the board or that it was her job to, similar to this evening, let them know about some of the statistics that were going on. The second time that I spoke to Dr. Alonso, she actually called me. Can I have just two more minutes?
You have another minute, go ahead.
She let me know that she was in a meeting that day with Dr. Fanoi. And he told her that as long as a student wasn't under quarantine and had been released by the CDC, that you would be able to play and go back to school brick and mortar. There have been other schools that have had positive COVID cases. As an example, Seminole Ridge had missed one game but was allowed to play just the following week. Palm Beach Central is the only school in the district to have had to lose three out of their four games. The CDC says if you are released by them, you are safe to play. In fact, Dr. Alonso told me that the kids now have the antibodies or are actually in just fine shape. So my question remains the same that no one has answered yet. Who has made the decision that the school, that our school wasn't going to be able to play the remainder of the games? And yes, you had some, some kids talk about as seniors that this is an opportunity for them and may be their only opportunity to go to school on any kind of partial scholarship. So all I'm asking for is the same rules for our school as you've made for others. Board member Marcia Andrews, thank you so much for your kind words. We appreciate everything you've done for us. Dr. Fanoi, thank you again for your leadership. And I'm certain that you'll all do the right thing. Thank you.
Fanoi Haskin?
Hello, good evening. Thanks for the time tonight. I'm a parent of one of the Palm Beach Central football players, Ahmad Hayston, who spoke later, earlier. He's only a sophomore, but I'm echoing his words. I'm echoing the words of the seniors. They went through quarantine. They were cleared. They prepared physically for this season. They planned academically. And now they need the games so they can get the scholarships. So I'm just asking for consideration, adjustments to the decision so that they can get some more regular season games in as well as be prepared for the playoffs. Thank you.
We have one more speaker that's here. Then, Mr. Superintendent, would you be able to have some of your staff address these parents and students that are here tonight? The next speaker is Edith Pride. Ms. Pride, would you come up to the podium? You have three minutes to hear.
Mr. Chairman, staff is already outside.
Okay, staff's outside.
Edith Pride, Boca Raton Elementary School. Good evening, Dr. Fanoi and school board members. In February of this year, we all started seriously watching the following and following the news concerning the COVID-19 virus. It did not sneak up on us. We watched as the numbers kept going up. At no time did the district instruct teachers to give a reading run in record to formally assess the students in case we had to close down. Considering the fact that we are educators, this bothered me. The primary reason being, no one knew how long we could be asked to stay home away from school. Then on March 13th, we received a call to go home and wait for the notice. Six months go by. School begins again. But now teachers don't have to deal with the, just the summer slide. They have to deal with the new COVID slide. And again, teachers have not been instructed to assess the student on a reading, running record. Teachers have, must have a district-wide assessment that informs every stakeholder that is involved with the student accuracy concerning the child's progress. That is what reading run record provides. Records were incomplete all over the district. Assessment of upper and lowercase letters, beginning sounds, sight words, blending, segmenting, rhyming, and most importantly, reading. And yet, the district has not instructed teachers to do so. And yet, the district has not instructed teachers to do so, at least the students that are brick and mortar. Now hear this, as was shouted on the Navy warships. No I read a computer test, no Khan Academy computer test can replace a teacher assessing a child and listening to the child read. The teacher needs to listen to the fluency of the reader, listen to the retelling and the comprehension of what the child has read, and you still have not instructed us to do so. Teachers need to know how much a child has regressed so they will know where to start again. This has become insanity. Wake up, district. I watched all summer as Ms. Andrews kept saying how other districts were getting things together and how we needed to get with the program. We are still not with the program. Dr. Robinson gave medical info, Mr. Barbieri and some of the ladies on the board, they held off of computers in every community, but Ms. Andrews kept saying, "We got to get these things together. We are not working fast enough." Unless you are in a classroom now, you cannot imagine the gaps in the students' learning. It's as if a large number of the students were hibernating for six months, never looking at a book, a word, a letter, or a picture. Teachers don't even quite know what to do. It's testing about money from the government? We are testing when we should be teaching and we should not be, and we should be allowing teachers to use whatever it takes material-wise to educate these children. This is war and we are losing it because educating students is out of the hands of the teacher. And on top of that, you don't want to pay us what we have earned. Teachers teach children, not the butcher, not the baker, not the candlestick maker. Pay teachers what we've earned because you can't pay us what we're worth. Thank you.
I have one card. I'm not sure if you spoke or not. Maya Latney, if I pronounce that correctly. To the young men that are here from the football team, the superintendent's instructed one of his staff members to go out and speak to the parents in the courtyard so they're are working on your issue out there. Go ahead, ma'am.
Maya Le Hugh, I, um, I'm Ashton Smith's mom, another parent from Central. Um, I grew up in, in West Palm. I was born and raised here, graduated from Forest Hill, played every sport imaginable in middle and high school. And I know how important this is to these kids to be able to play these games, to be able to warm up and be warm and be ready for these playoffs that they're just going to be thrown into if we can't figure out a resolution. And these boys who are, you know, they're depending on this game time to go to college, you know? And, and I don't know, it just breaks my heart that, you know, now in this time, I get it and, you know, mortgages can be pushed back and so many things can be pushed back. Why can't a football playoff season be pushed back so these boys have a fair chance at their future and have a fair chance at not being injured at these playoff games? I just know how important it was to me. I know how important it is to my son and all of, all of the team members and the coaches to get a fair shot at, um, you know, what they've worked so hard for, for one, two, three, and four years, you know? And, um, I guess, I guess that's it. That's all. You've, you've heard us all and I hope you all can decide a resolution that really works for the boys because that's what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Andrews, you had a comment?
I'm truly disappointed tonight. I spent my day today talking to the regional office when I heard about this situation. I walked Palm Beach Central home yesterday and I did talk to the principal. And when I'm sitting in here tonight, one of the things I asked Dr. Finnoy today as well as Mr. Turney, had anyone called these parents that were signed up to speak tonight? And the answer was, they did not know. This is unacceptable for me as the board member, sitting here representing Palm Beach Central, an excellent school, a great football team, for parents to come in here tonight to say that they couldn't even get a phone call answered to them when they tried to find out what was going on. Seminole Ridge is my school too in District Six, and yes, they had an issue, but they did go back. I want equal fairness for all of the schools and just a, a quick meeting, a quick meeting, a quick meeting outside these doors is not enough for me tonight. Mr. Dr. Finnoy, I have to hold you accountable and Mr. Oswald because I want this straightened out. I want people to have a, a chance to sit at the table and talk about these things that they said tonight. Somebody said they talked to Dr. Alonso. I asked for her to be here tonight because I needed to hear what she had to say about COVID. And I'm really disappointed that my district and Palm Beach Central is out here having to beg for their children to play and we didn't respect our stakeholders, the parents. And I need something to happen, Mr. Barbieri, through, to the superintendent, that somebody's going to spend some quality time and take care of these young people today. It's really all about them. That's why we're sitting in here tonight. And I'm truly disgusted that I'm having to kind of have this kind of conversation with the leaders here and how you let the boys down. Let's get it straightened out and give them an opportunity. And too much, too much is being said from Mrs. Alonso and the superintendent and why did we do something for one and we didn't do it for others? And I don't want anybody out in the dark trying to make a decision tonight. We, when the daylight shines tomorrow, I need to have a meeting set up so that everybody can understand what's going on and why did we do what we did so that we can give these boys an opportunity. And if there's something that's really real, that's different from what's happened with the other schools, I need to know as the board member for District Six, why did it happen? I'm not trying to macro manage, but my role is to make sure that children have the best opportunities for success. Thank you.
All right, board members, we have four recorded, um, four recorded non-agenda speakers. So I'll ask IT to start playing those at this point.
Good evening, Palm Beach County School District and School Superintendent. My name is Brother Carl Mohammed and I'm calling as a non-agenda speaker. You know, after viewing the Equity Workshop that took place this past week, I truly see we are still having major problems as it relates to wrangling with the word equity. You know, we tried from the community to introduce the school district to our big brother, Dr. John Robert Brown, who has a book out called Walking the Equity Talk, a guide for courageously, culturally courageous leadership in the school community. And when we look at the problem with equity, we can't fix something if we don't repair some of the damages that we've been, uh, that have been done, particularly with the deficit model of curriculum that we have inside of our school centers. Um, the deficit model is creating major problems and it is the biggest equity problem that I think we need to, um, that we have. And we've always worked as a community, worked along with you guys as the school district. I'm hoping that you will reach back out to us so that we can draw some conclusions to the idea of equity. And one, lastly, a fact check, if you will. You know, uh, with what happened with the principal in Boca Raton, Mr. Lasson, we see that there was a lot of proclamations that, um, this was the greatest human tragedy. I would like to, um, put up, um, another suggestion as it relates to Florida Statute 1003.428. And if you would look at the Transatlantic Slave Parade where we, um, on an estimate of 50,000 of our brothers and sisters, on the low estimate, were lost in the Middle Passage, it's not counting the people that were here in the Western Hemisphere. I think we need to do a real assessment of, of things that we announced. And when we talk about tragedy, we're going to have to look at what has happened to those of us who are the children of the slaves here in America, either in the Western Hemisphere. And I think it would help to better guide some of the conversation that has been given to our children as fact. And I think we need to re, uh, revisit that and see if we can't straighten that out as well. Um, I want to thank you always for allowing me the opportunity to have a com, um, comment. But we also are planning an acculturation class on January the 16th, um, the weekend of the Monday became celebration. We're asking everybody to focus their attention on some of the things that are needed inside of the worst part of Palm Beach County School District. Thank you again and y'all have a blessed day.
Hi, my name is Emily Ballloff, B-A-L-L-O-F-F. Um, I'm a parent of twin second graders currently enrolled in Palm Beach County School District. Um, and I have a non-agenda item, uh, topic here. With over 10,000 COVID cases in our state, our school district and school board have a responsibility to ensure the safety amongst our students, teachers, and their families. We cannot allow Governor DeSantis to continue to bully by extending, quote, "executive orders", end quote, without regard for the health and well-being of his constituents. Number one, we must go back to virtual learning after Thanksgiving and at the very least, until winter break begins. Two, please do not take away the distance learning platform this year. If the governor decides that it should be removed, school districts across the state must rise up and say no in the name of safety, health, and well-being of our students, teachers, and staff and their families. Three, after winter break, extend compassion and grace to all teachers who wish to teach virtually. Please allow them to do so without penalty. Please allow them to do their job in the best, within the best platform that they are able to in order to continue to educate our children and keep their families and themselves safe from contracting this virus that has proven to be deadly. By doing so, you will most certainly be saving lives and excellent teachers from leaving the public school system altogether.
Good afternoon. I am Dr. Gabriela Mendez and as a parent of, of a student in the district and a proud member of the Hispanic Education Coalition, I want to welcome and congratulate the new member of the board, Ms. Alexandria, Alexandria Ayala. As a Latina educator, I am thrilled to have Mrs. Ayala representing the Latin families in the district. The Hispanic Education Coalition is looking forward to working with you and supporting you, Ms. Ayala, in the promotion of equity and excellence for all minoritized students, faculty, and staff in the district. Best wishes of success.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Lakevia Thompson. I am a parent of a Palm Beach Central football player and I just wanted to call and leave a comment in regards to the district's decision to cancel the rest of the regular season games. Um, this is something that I totally disagree with. I don't think it's fair. Um, we were cleared to not only go back to school today, which is the 17th, we were also cleared to start that practicing today. We received an email saying that the games would be canceled until 11:29. Um, I know for a fact there have been other schools that have had a similar situation and they were still allowed to play. They may have missed one or two games and they were still allowed to make up their games and continue the season. I don't feel like this is fair, what you guys are doing to Palm Beach Central High School. Um, there's about 20-something seniors on the team and they are really looking forward to finish the season. Um, there are scholarships at risk. Um, like I said before, the kids are ready to get back on the field. They should not be treated unfairly. Um, Glade Central High School plagued them and they were not quarantined, which again is not fair. That's all I have to say on this issue.
Board members, I thought there was one more, but that's the end. Unless anyone else has anything, we need a motion to adjourn this meeting. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, second to my Ms. Ayala. Any discussion, home favorite, opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.